President, right? Do we have a volunteer for the invocation tonight? Okay, I'll do it today. Oh my God, oh Jesus, sorry. We will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Katrina Manning, okay? So if everybody could bow their heads. Lord, as we entered to this meeting, there's a lot of things we would like to offer up to you. If you could lead our world towards peace and all the different regions that are having conflict, to solve something permanent so that everybody can just simply get along like they say. And here immediately in the city of Hawthorne, we just would love for you to help our community and our city to continue to prosper. I mean, there's so many things ahead of us. And please bless our community, protect our residents, their health, their safety, and that we as a council will make the right decisions to continue down that path. So we just ask for your guidance and your blessings as a whole. Thank you. Amen.
Amen. I'm sorry, but can we get protection too? You said the residents, I want some protection.
All right, let's go, let's go.
Put your hand on your microphone, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
And we always like to honor our veterans and those who are, have served, who have passed away serving our country and those who are serving at the moment. And that also includes our safety personnel, law enforcement, firefighters, and everybody that protects us, right? So the roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Manning?
Here.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Here.
Mayor Protem Montero?
Here.
Mayor Vargas?
Here.
Okay, we're good? All right. We have about five presentations. So just the decorum aspect of it, I wouldn't even say decorum, just kind of just rules and just conduct of the meeting. So we're going to be having residents that are going to be coming up to the podium there in a little short while during oral communications. That's a three-minute stretch that you're able to speak. Make sure you compact all your comments within those three minutes. You're free to say whatever you want, communicate. Ideally, I mean, if you want to talk about what you did for vacation, you kind of sort of could say that, but I mean, you lose your credibility when you go off topic, right? So, you know, but, and then during the presentations, there's a 10-minute limit on the presentation. So we really asked the presenters during the presentation section to limit whatever their presentations are to 10 minutes. The more you speak, the more you really lose, you know, your messaging. So if you can make it as efficient and compact, I think we'll, it'll speak good for itself, right? And so there's no need to even remind you guys, but I'm really excited and proud of our city council. We've been able to get some business done like in the way far back. So there's no need to mention, everybody knows what we need to do as a council to be able to move forward, right? All right, so. DJ Torado? He's going to be talking about the Hawthorne Safety Action Plan. Okay, DJ.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, City Hawthorne staff and residents. My name is DJ Torado, Assistant or Associate Traffic Engineer with the Public Works Department. And I will be presenting on the City of Hawthorne Safety Action Plan. So this is part of the Safe Streets and Roads for All Plan that was funded by the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law back in November 2021. And the goal of this is to improve roadway safety by significantly reducing and eventually eliminating roadway fatalities and serious injuries. And this addresses areas where safety countermeasures are urgently needed in the city, primarily in underserved communities. So back in 20, in December 2023, City of Hawthorne was awarded $200,000 in federal funding to develop a comprehensive safety action plan. And in July 2024, we awarded Kim Lee Horn and Associates to assist with developing this plan. City of Hawthorne staff assisted with this development, including representatives from Public Works, Planning, Community Services, Police Department, and City Manager's Office. And the adoption of the Safety Action Plan is required for some of the grants that the city is trying to apply for, including the Safe Streets for All Implementation Grant and Highway Safety Improvement Projects. So the Safety Action Plan incorporates a safe system approach. The principles of this approach include death and serious injuries are unacceptable, humans make mistakes, humans are vulnerable, responsibility is shared with everyone, including government and residents, safety is proactive, and redundancy is crucial. And the safe system approach, the idea is to enforce safer people, safer vehicles, safer speeds, safer roads, and post-crash care. So in developing the Safety Action Plan, the city came up with this vision statement, which is, "The City of Hawthorne is dedicated to improving its transportation network to ensure safe travel for all residents and visitors, with a focus on reducing traffic fatalities and serious injuries and advancing toward this goal of zero traffic-related deaths and serious injuries." And the intent of the Safety Action Plan is to create a greater awareness of road safety and risks, reduce the number of fatal and severe injury crashes, develop lasting partnerships, provide support for grant and funding opportunities, and prioritize investments in safety throughout the city. So the city analyzed the crash safety trends from 2019 to 2023. All of these crashes were reported to the police and they were entered into a database. So from 2019 to 2023, the general trend is that the crashes are going down. But from 2021 to 2022, it went up a little bit. And the orange slash brown bar that you see, those are mostly broadside accidents, which are also known as T-bone accidents. So a lot of the incidents that do happen in the city are T-bone related incidents. And the California Office of Traffic Safety most recently ranked Hawthorne as 61 out of 105 peer cities for total fatal and injured crashes. You don't want to be number one in this case because number one means you have the most crashes. So being ranked 61 means the city is doing okay and it's in the less impacted half of that group compared to its peer cities. In terms of injuries, there is a downward trend somewhat. Most of the injuries are complaint of pain. And usually that means people who were during the accident, they may seem dazed or confused. And then people who don't really have visible injuries. So any of those kind of injuries. And then severe injuries in this case is anything that's not fatal, but they might have broken bones or any sort of lacerations that are more severe and serious. And in terms of fatal and severe crashes, there is a downward trend somewhat in fatal crashes. But as you can see, the number of severe crashes has been steadily increasing, which is a problem that we're trying to solve with the Safety Action Plan. And then this chart just shows fatal and serious injury crashes involving pedestrians. So the total number of severe injury crashes is 72 between 2019 and 2023. And then the number of fatal overall has been eight. In terms of the data, the key takeaway from these data is that collisions involving minority individuals have accounted for almost 70% of all collisions that have occurred. 23% of individuals were between the ages of 45 and 64. 20% of individuals were 14 years and younger. And 51% of pedestrians involved in collisions were 44 years and younger. And this typically suggests that minorities either residing or entering the city of Hawthorne may be disproportionately affected by traffic injuries and roadway conditions in the city. So as part of this Safety Action Plan, the city had engagement and collaboration with various residents during city events. We hosted a table during the Hot August Night Car Show, the Touch a Truck event. We also did surveys, both paper and online to the residents. And we also had an online map where residents can put in their input about how they feel about safety in the city. So in terms of the survey, some of the questions we asked is, what form of transportation do you normally take? The majority did say cars, but there's also a good proportion of people that do walk around the city and also ride a bike. And then, so besides cars, the most often used transportation is walking and biking. And then a simple question we asked is, do you feel safe when walking around Hawthorne? 67% of the respondents said they don't. And the typical reasons why they don't feel safe is fear of drivers and their cars. Other responses include lack of sidewalks, lack of street lighting, lack of shade, and lack of sidewalks. And then similarly with biking, we asked, do you feel safe when we are biking around Hawthorne? And 84% said they don't. And the common reasons for not feeling safe when biking include fear of drivers and their cars, lack of protected bike lanes, and also a lack of separation from cars. So when analyzing the safety data, we focus on specific regions in the city where there's a serious concentration of serious and fatal crashes. And we looked at both intersections and short segments along the city. And we focused, we're focusing on five major locations throughout the city. This includes Crenshaw Boulevard and El Segundo, the Menida Gardens neighborhood, Imperial Highway from Truro to Acacia, 120th Street from Crenshaw to Wilkie, and the entirety of Hawthorne Boulevard. And why we chose these locations, Crenshaw Boulevard and El Segundo Boulevard have the highest number of crashes as a signalized intersection. Menida Gardens in general, just because there's been a high number of various types of crashes, so side swipe, aggressive. Imperial Highway from Truro to Acacia because of the number of property damages and T-bone accidents in that location. 120th Street from Crenshaw to Wilkie because of the high number of crashes for that segment. And also a lot of injuries with complaints of pain. And Hawthorne Boulevard due to the high number of pedestrian and bicycle crashes. So we set up this map online and we did, we sent out a mailer to over 18,000 residents in the city asking them for their opinions about these project locations and what they thought. These mailers were sent out and they were allowed to respond between February 27th and April 7th. And so we marked on the map some of the potential improvements that we wanted to do. So adding better crosswalks, making sure that there's protected left turns, installing hard medians to prevent people from making dangerous left turns out of the smaller intersections. And we got a lot of good feedback from residents. A lot of residents were really supportive of these implementations and ideas. And they emphasized that they were excited that the city is taking more steps to address safety in the area. And then so after adoption and implementation of this plan, we're planning to attack these funding sources. So this includes the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program for our construction, the Highway Safety Improvement Program, Caltrans programs, SB1, Office of Traffic Safety Grants, and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. So the next steps that the city is going to do is, we recommend that the city council approve Resolution 8521 to adopt the Safety Action Plan. We're going to be applying for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Implementation Grants to get construction funding, and that's due in June 2025. We're going to be applying for more federal and state funding opportunities to fund these projects. We're going to be monitoring the success of this action plan and perform updates every five years to make sure that the city is on track to making sure that there's no deaths or fatalities in the city. And this Safety Action Plan will allow the city to be more competitive and to stay eligible for funding opportunities. And that is it. Thank you.
To the chair? Thank you so much for that presentation. One of the things that come to mind is, did you guys test the traffic lights? So let's say on 120th, the light between, I guess, Hawthorne Boulevard to Inglewood Boulevard, there's always, like, the lights seem to be off. So there's always this gather of cars piled up. And when people are trying to walk across the street, it's really hard for them to walk across the street. So I feel like the timing of the light is off or something, the timing of the traffic light is off. So that it, for me, I think, have you guys checked that? To make sure that the timing of when they want to cross versus the timing of the actual traffic light is in sync so that it's not backed up with cars?
Yeah, so in terms of that, we did have, we did recently have the 120th Street Improvement Project. So those signals temporarily were kind of out of sync just so when we were upgrading the signals and also doing the paving, that's the reason why they were sort of out of sync. So we're, we've gone back to the county, we've asked them to resync the signals. So they should be fine right now. I can double check again with the county to make sure that that's been implemented.
Okay, especially the one on 120th and Inglewood, no Prairie.
Prairie, okay.
Yeah, Prairie and 120th. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, DJ. That was a great presentation. I want to flip to the slide that you have where Hawthorne is ranked 61, 61st or 61 of the 105 peer cities. I know you made mention that that was a good ranking. However, when making the assessment or the feasibility study, I'm curious to know, is this in our five-mile radius? In our little city and/or is this the city of Hawthorne, say, freeway off of Hawthorne? So in other words, 61st ranking in the city, the, you know, the radius that we are, five, what, 5.9 or something like that or one? Can't remember, something like that.
So it's, it's based on whatever the city lines are, all within the city of Hawthorne city limit lines.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and who does our California Office of Traffic Safety, who exactly is that?
I believe that's, that's an office in the state of California where they compile all of the traffic data.
Okay. Okay, and then just piggybacking off of Councilmember Manning's, there are some signal lights where you feel like you're sitting there for a period of time, especially on El Segundo, and I think it's, what's the little street that comes out of there? Where the brewery's at?
Cerise.
Yeah, Cerise, the next one over, there's a, starts with west, it starts with a W, I don't remember the name. But anyway, those lights seem to take forever and you're just sitting there. And of course, people are gonna do their thing, right? And it's not safe at that point because, you know, they're doing, driving around in circles just to avoid the light to get back on. The other thing was, you made mention the fear of drivers and their cars. Do you have an assessment of where they felt fearful? Where it talks about the crosswalk, street light, lack of street crossings, lack of street light, lack of shade, which I didn't get that one, lack of sidewalks? Is there like a general idea, where are these concerns for more prevalent in the city? Is it, we, is it east, west, north, south? Because it just seems like it's kind of like broad, right? They don't feel safe. I mean, we have not a big city, but just, just something to think about, right? When we talk about where they're feeling fearful. I live across the street from Costco and I'm fearful every day because there are maniacs over there coming out of Costco, flying, you know, all over the place. But for the most part, can you talk a little bit about reaching out to the 18,000 residents? This was the survey that you guys did on Facebook and some other social media?
Yes.
Because we had some other folks asking, I think City Clerk was asking if we had done a survey. But that's good to know. And then obviously, the emphasis for the crosswalks, lights, and installation action. We're going to be doing a new city hall, a new senior center, a new public works yard. So obviously, this money's going to help fund where those safety factors are and we could implement those. So I'm really grateful for your department and what you guys are doing to get funding for us. And I know that you made mention Resolution 8521 and applying for that. Are we using our city as a city that's usually not necessarily funded fully for this type of implementation? In other words, there's, there's usually communities that lack in more, is what I'm asking.
The underserved communities.
Underserved communities, you know. I just want to know how exactly we're going to be making those funding requests.
So those emphasis areas that I mentioned, so mentioned Menida Gardens, Crenshaw and El Segundo. So those are the areas that we're targeting. And then, so when we go apply for those grants, we're going to mention, hey, particularly Menida Gardens, that's an underserved community in the city. And this is why safety needs to be emphasized in this region because there's a lot of crashes and incidents here. So that when we apply for, when we do our grant application, we're going to mention all that and focus on the fact that a lot of these underserved communities are disproportionately impacted.
Okay. And can I just real quick mention, I know that oftentimes we're asked for speed bumps, speed hops, preferential parking, I mean, just inundated sometimes with just request, request. And sometimes it's not the thing to do. And sometimes it's not the, the thing to do. I hope that you guys take that into consideration. I know that we've been working really hard to make feasibility studies with regards to parking.
Yes.
And we've made some great strides. And I just want to make sure that whatever is being asked in the funding sources, that it's fully of request for the needs and that, that especially in the Monita Gardens section where they have sometimes no, no striping on the street to she, to even show it's a crosswalk.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
To the chair. Sorry, I just had one more. Go back.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask you this, and I'm not sure if you know 100% the answer. But on 100, I'm sorry, on 116th and Crenshaw, I had asked previously, and I know that's the city of Inglewood, but it's also the city of Hawthorne when you pass the trash, the alleyway. And so that traffic light is really off. And so I want, I know that they're doing developments right now. Are you guys working in conjunction with that particular area off 116th and Crenshaw? Only, I'm only asking because I live on that street and there's always a backup all the way back to the part of the city of Hawthorne. And I was just wondering, are you guys working together on that?
I'm personally not involved in that. I don't, I'm not entirely aware of that. But that could be something that I could look into more for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, DJ, for the presentation. Can you go back to that slide from the Crash Safety Trends from 2009, 2023? Yeah, that one right there. Thank you. I'm just going to make a observation because that's the, the only way we're going to decrease traffic injuries and a lot of these cars, you know, flying our streets. You see, 2019, that was before COVID. And then you see 2020, the traffic injuries, you know, diminish, right? Decrease. And then 2021. Now 2022, it went up because people start driving again, go back to work or, or doing lidges. So then 2023, it's still not higher than the 2022. So my question is, what are we doing to take these cars off the road, right? Because like we said, especially in Monita Gardens, right? We have 73% all renters leaving those apartment buildings. Some of them might have four cars, right? So are we talking about what to do with this type of mobility hubs, right? To take people off the street, maybe make them walk more, bike more? But at the same time, you know, we have a biking problem because they don't feel safe. 84%, that's a, that's a tremendous number. So what, what can we do to improve those safety lanes, especially the bike lanes? And also, if there is a plan to make Hawthorne more walkable, then, so they can stop driving the cars? Because some people just go like two blocks to go to shopping, Ralph or, or Nortgate, they pick up the car and drive. So what can we do to say, please do not do that? Just walk or just get a bike with a basket on the back and go shopping?
So a lot of these grant and funding programs, they emphasize mobility. So walk, alternative modes of transportation, so walking and biking. And those are the grants that we're going for. I think just emphasizing that and promoting more of these alternative methods besides just single occupancy vehicles would be one way. Expanding our sidewalk network, making sure that we promote projects that do emphasize bike safety, so safer bike lanes for the city and things like that. So just trying to make sure that we, we remind people that, you know, there are alternate ways to get around the city. And as long as we have projects that promote that, I think a lot more people will, you know, take those alternate methods of transportation.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else that had another question?
Last, last comment? Go ahead.
Okay. I was just wondering, do we have anything written where we could show the map of a safer way to get around the city that we can share with the residents? And is there a plan to include more bike lanes?
So this Safety Action Plan includes more projects that include bike lanes. So having safer bike lanes on Hawthorne Boulevard and other major arterial, arterial streets. So we currently don't have a map of that, but that's something that we could provide and work on.
Yeah, if we have safer routes, like, that would be, I think, ideally a great idea to put on our website saying, hey, here's safer ways to get around the city and you don't have to go that way. And that's another way I feel like we could promote walkability and safety. And then I thought we had like a bike club? Didn't we have a bike club at one point for the city? Where we could promote, you know, bike rides or something? I thought we had one years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so, no, thank you for your presentation. I know that there's the safety and I know we want to encourage walkability. But that's all, that's all something that should have been included in our general, general plan. And how we build our streets, how we build our neighborhoods, and, you know, the specifications that we give to developers when they build high-density housing in particular. So I think it's something that we, if we want to encourage, if it's something that we want to encourage walkability within the streets, then that's not something that we should, the possibility of encouraging it, say we encourage, okay, we got people. But then what we do is keep on approving high-density projects that you build, you encroach up until there's no green space right in front of these apartment buildings. You basically have a wall that ends right at the sidewalk. So you reduce the size of a sidewalk in some of these neighborhoods. And it's like, you don't, who's going to want to walk down those streets? There's, there's, it's not inviting to walk. It's not like you're going to walk your dogs down some of these streets. You've got a wall facing you and, you know, you have cars coming in and outside of some of these apartment buildings, high-density. We've got to do the best we can. I think we just need to be very conscious when we approve any further residential units. Because we say one thing and then we keep countering it. We keep exacerbating the parking problem. We keep exacerbating the, this, you know, safety issue of people wanting to walk and et cetera. So we've just got to be realistic. And if we're going to do something, we just have to respect our general plan and not veer from it. Okay? Just really need to be conscious. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Guido Fernandez?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp and Councilmembers. I'm Guido Fernandez, the Hawthorne Airport Manager. It's good to see all of you and thank you for the opportunity to talk about airport funding and landing fees. Now, how does the airport receive federal funding? Well, the FAA Airport Improvement Program provides grants to public agencies for the planning and development of public use airports that are included in what they call the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems. Now, for small primary reliever and general aviation airports such as the Hawthorne Airport, the grant covers a range anywhere from 90% to 95% of eligible cost based on FAA regulations. Historically, at the Hawthorne Airport, the FAA has paid for 90% of AIP-approved projects and the city has paid the remaining 10%. Now, what types of projects are eligible for AIP funding? AIP-eligible projects include those improvements related to enhancing the safety, the security, the capacity, and environmental concerns. In general, sponsors such as the city of Hawthorne can get AIP funds for most airfield capital improvement projects or rehabilitation projects. Now, there are certain also professional services that are necessary for eligible projects such as planning, surveying, and design, which are also eligible for AIP funding. How much funding is allocated to general aviation airports such as ours? Well, annual AIP, FAA entitlements, as they call it, are based on the number of employments. Employments is defined as passengers boarding an aircraft and also the type of airport category. Our airport, Hawthorne Airport, is categorized as a public and commercial service non-primary airport. We also consider a general aviation and a reliever airport, a reliever to LAX. Now, airports under 10,000 annual employments receive $150,000 per year from the FAA AIP program. Whereas airports with 10,000 or more employments receive $1 million per year from the FAA. At the Hawthorne Airport, currently, our annual entitlement, AIP entitlement, is $150,000. There is a new FAA reauthorization bill, and what will its impact be on our airport? We're currently waiting for our local FAA ADO, the Airport District Office, to interpret the recently approved FAA reauthorization bill to determine if our annual entitlement will increase, will go up. Now, an increased amount of annual entitlement will not affect the number of AIP-eligible projects approved at our airport. However, it will benefit the airport because we will no longer have to ask or compete as much for other funding sources such as discretionary funding, set-aside funding, state-apportioned funding to fully fund our airport improvement projects. Now, here is, you see the history of improvement projects and FAA funding at the airport. From approximately 14 years, 14 years, 2007 to 2021, we received a little bit over $9 million from the FAA for various rehab projects such as rehabbing the runway, the taxiways, improving our fire and light safety at our air traffic control tower. In '21, we reconstructed part of our taxiway. Now, improvement projects at the Hawthorne Airport for the next 10 years, from 2025 to 2035, for approximately the next 10 years, we're expecting to receive a little bit over $10 million from the FAA for various capital improvement projects such as, like I said, rehab, rehab of the runway, taxiways. In '27, we want to upgrade our lighting and signage to LED. Eventually, we're also going to plan on, once again, upgrading and improving our perimeter fence. Now, switching topics to landing fees at the airport. What are landing fees? Landing fees are charges, fees imposed by airports on aircraft operators landing at a particular airport. These fees are a common way for airports to generate revenue and help cover the cost of maintaining their infrastructure such as runways, taxiways, air traffic control, and emergency services. Landing fees are usually based on the weight of the aircraft. Therefore, heavier aircraft would be paying a greater landing fee.
Guido?
Yes.
So when we're talking about the airport, does that mean the city of Hawthorne, which is your department that manages the airport? Or the operator?
In actually two slides, I'm going to explain how that works at our airport. How would landing fees affect the Hawthorne Airport? Well, landing fees may discourage, intend to discourage aircraft traffic, which would reduce our airport revenue from fuel concession fees. This would have a detrimental effect on our second-largest source of airport revenue, which is the fuel concession fees. Our number-one source of revenue at the airport is the master lease we have with Hawthorne Airport LLC. Also, the FAA does not look favorably on landing fees because they tend to not promote aviation transportation. Also, the majority of GA, general aviation airports, don't charge landing fees. And finally, landing fees have been legally challenged by various aviation groups, organizations, since they're sometimes seen as discriminatory based on their application and because they tend to discourage air transportation. Now, to answer the mayor's question, how would the revenue from landing fees be allocated at our airport, at the Hawthorne Airport? Back in 2005, the city of Hawthorne entered into a long-term master ground lease with Hawthorne Airport LLC. Now, landing fees and the revenue generated would be received and managed by Hawthorne Airport LLC per Section 3.11 of the master ground lease between the city and Hawthorne Airport LLC. Now, talking about now preparation plan for Hawthorne Airport regarding major regional events. As you all know, we're having several events that are coming up. In '26, the FIFA World Cup at SoFi. Also, in '26, the NBA All-Star Game. In '27, we'll have a Super Bowl at SoFi Stadium. And in '28, the LA 28 Summer Olympics. Now, the Hawthorne Airport can play a key role during these major events because we can serve as an aviation hub, an emergency staging area of need be, a logistic, a logistic support site. So it's, the city should upgrade, or continue, I should say, to upgrade airport facilities using these FAA AIP grants. We should coordinate regional transportation and safety plans, continue to enhance our public infrastructure, and finally, launch marketing efforts not only to promote Hawthorne as a destination site, but also to support citywide economic activity during this high-profile period of events that are approaching us. And that's all I have for you tonight.
So would that be the city's responsibility or the operators?
It would be the master ground tenant who would be receiving that income, and they would be managing it.
Any questions?
To the chair. To the chair. Thank you, Guido. Appreciate the presentation. And thank you for being our alternate with Councilmember Katrina and I at our LAX Advisory Committee that we meet. I believe it's the second Thursday of the month in the evening for all that you've been doing to help promote, not just our airport, but giving us such valuable information as you, as you did this evening. I think the secret's out when it comes about Hawthorne Airport. LAX is so huge that folks are trying to avoid LAX. Everybody wants to land at our Hawthorne Airport, including all of our superstars in, in sports and entertainment and our movie stars trying to hide from the paparazzi, right? So I could name a few movie stars that have landed there, you know, and I could go on and on and on and on. I've been a big proponent for landing fees for a reason. We've been historically a city that has been very kind to those that use the airport. And I think it's just time that we look at ourselves as more of a business due to just the ongoing developments that we have in the pipelines to be able to be secured in our future for funding, if you will, for things that are unexpected. So I'm going to continue to promote in spite of FAA and everything else that they've done. Thank you, FAA. 10 million is great. However, again, I think we're losing out on opportunities. And you just named a few at the very end of your slide. Where we have, you know, the FIFA Cup coming, we have the Olympics coming. We have the All-Star, NBA All-Star coming. We, I could just go on and on. And as you know, we have the Intum Dome. We have SoFi Stadium. Everybody wants to come in their commercial, small airplanes from all over the nation and land at LAX. And it's starting to get congested. It really is. I think at some point, we're going to have to just look at this at a, you know, at a, at a better opportunity. I don't want us to truly believe that just, just solely because of the FAA providing funding sources to us, that this is the only thing we have. I really believe we need to, to do more. And, and that would help also in promoting our airport. I understand that we have a, a major lease agreement with LLC Airport. And I appreciate that. However, this has been something in the pipelines for years. And I just kind of feel like Hawthorne is kind of settling and those that are managing are leveraging. And so that's kind of where I'm at. And so I'm really looking out for the residents of Hawthorne, for Hawthorne being a city that has to, in a sense, catch up to its time and its time. And so with that, I want to continue to push on how we could better monitor the situation and not necessarily believe that FAA is our only funding source. So please keep that in mind. And I say that also to our city manager, our city attorney. Because I know there's often challenges that comes from the LLC Hawthorne management system. But at the end of the day, it's Hawthorne's, not them, right?
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To the chair. Quick question. Can the city dictate to the master lease agreement owners landing fees, that they're required to take in landing fees?
I think that would require a review of the master lease. Yeah, for that, I would probably have to.
And who gets the landing fee money?
That's pursuant to the master lease agreement. It's, it's landing fees are calculated as part of the base of the rent that this, that the Hawthorne Airport LLC pays the city. So the landing fees, I believe, goes straight to the Hawthorne Airport LLC.
And so can we dictate to them what they do with that money?
The, the provision under the master lease agreement, under 3.11, specifically has a formula for their base rent that they pay the city. And that formula includes the landing fees. I guess anything can be I guess anything can be discussed with the operators there. And, but I don't think they would agree to increasing the landing fees at this point.
And I think my question on that one was, I did understand what you said about the landing fees. But once they collect the landing fees, can we tell them what to do with that money?
No, the landing fees are part of the formula in the rent that they pay, the base rent that they pay the city. So, I think they collect it and add it on to the base rent.
Okay. But it's their money to do with what they want?
Correct.
Okay. So, my next thing is, is if landing fees deter people from coming to our airport and they'll go somewhere else and taxing and fees and everything like that deters that particular activity because people at one point are just going to say, no, they're not going to do it. Would our better option be, even if we're functioning under the current employment money that we get from the FAA, and this is money that we get, right? Okay, that we have control over.
Correct.
And we can do what we need to do at the airport. So, if we include, if we actually not do something that would inhibit people from landing to actually encourage more landings and we get up over 10,000 employments, how much money are we going to make?
So, based on the formula right now, under 10,000, we get 150. There is talk, based on that new bill, that...
Well, no, the current bill. How much, if we went over 10,000 employments?
1 million.
1 million.
1 million.
So, would we be better able to increase our landing and make a million? Or deter landing by increasing our landing fees and whatever that miniscule money we're going to make on landing fees? There's way more money in employments. With the new employment bill that was passed?
Correct.
Do you remember what the scale is? Because it's not the same scale. Can you give us those numbers?
Yeah. So, based on, and once again, this is after speaking with an FAA representative. And this is only an estimate, so I can't hold them to it. It might go from 150 to around 550,000 per year, which would be really beneficial for us because it would allow us, once again, not to have to compete with other funding sources that are also FAA-funded to do our projects. It wouldn't mean more projects. It would mean more security for the projects we have down the pipeline.
Yes. And so, we have more room with increasing our employments versus landing fees? Because we have no control over landing fees?
Right. But with employments, yes.
Thank you.
For the record, Guido, if you can explain what employments are to the public?
Yeah, it's the number of passengers boarding an aircraft. And it's not for private planes, let's say, for like the little Cessna. It's for commercial service. So, for example, the charter service that Hawthorne Airport LLC runs, those are considered employments. So, the more, I guess, flights they have, the more passengers, that's how they increase employments. And traditionally, it's been over the last maybe seven to eight years, anywhere from like 1,000 to around 5,000 at the most.
Ken, I'm sorry, to the chair. So, when you talk about commercial and private and that they're for boarding, right? Boarding, are they boarding fees?
Passengers boarding an aircraft, correct.
For the commercial flights?
Yes, only for the commercial. That's an employment.
Are we not aware of like what that looks like as far as cost that's being taken in? Like, is there a data or something that...
You mean the income that the charter company is making?
Right.
No, we don't have access to that information.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, LAX, like I said, it's a huge animal, so why not use Hawthorne? You know, Inglewood's trying to steal our airport, okay? Seriously.
No, 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 I understand.
That's how good we have it.
We do have a gem. I totally agree with you. We do have a gem in Hawthorne.
We have it really good.
So, Guido, so from what I'm hearing is the landing fees, it's, they get to use it at the discretion?
Right, correct.
They could use it to either pay the rent for their lease or they could use it to redo their infrastructure, correct?
It's whatever they choose to do with that revenue.
And we got the issue of the gas fees or whatever.
The fuel concession fees. So, the higher the traffic, the more fuel concession fees that we receive.
But it also goes in its entirety to them? Or is there a pass-through to the city?
Yes, we have a percentage of that that goes to the city. And we get that on a monthly basis, just like we do the master ground lease.
And so, the FAA grants that we have, you know, the ones that we go out and get?
Yes.
It's, it can only be earmarked for the infrastructure improvements.
Yes, they're very strict about that. It's what they call AIP eligibility rules. So, for example, it's very stringent, for example, rehabbing the runway, rehabbing the taxiways, upgrading your lighting and signage. So, it's limited to that.
How many hangar modifications, hangar installs, hangar builds has the tenants? How many have they built recently, in the last two, three, four years?
Well, they did all the Northside project a couple of years ago. We were talking about that. And that's, I would have to calculate how many hangars, but it was several and they spent millions of dollars in that construction.
What funding source did they use for that?
That's their own private funding source.
Okay. My understanding is that we're, you know, they're not, that we're operating at a shortfall with regards to the rent that they're paying us. So, I get conflicting information. And so, I mean, and I think it's something that we might be even tapping into our general fund to keep this airport going. Do I have any feedback from our city attorney, maybe, or city manager? Or is that something maybe we could look at?
We do have our budget hearing next month. That's something we can discuss and go into greater detail. But you are correct, we're operating at a shortfall.
So, they're...
You're correct.
So, they're building all these airport, these hangars? They're doing all these things electively, using the landing fees for whatever they want? But they're not meeting the obligation to the city?
Currently, there are no landing fees at the airport.
Oh.
I should say that. There are no landing fees. That hasn't been instituted.
Well, I know I'm going to have a lot more questions in the future. I'm not ready to ask them yet because, but this is kind of really, you know, interesting.
What we could do, Mayor, we can make this a discussion action item for the next meeting or future meetings.
I'll let you know offline if I decide to do that.
Through the chair. Thank you. Thank you, Guido, for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Just for the public knowledge, that the master lease agreement was done about many, many years ago.
2005.
2005. So, it was not this council. It was not the previous council. It was in 2005, before even the mayor got elected as city council, right? So, and then they had that lease agreement till 2035, correct?
Right.
So, and that is where we've been losing money because it was a bad deal that was done in 2005. So, and then, if we try to change that lease, we're going to get ourselves into litigation.
It was a 35-year lease with, I believe, two five-year extensions.
Yeah, see? So, that's what I'm saying. It was a bad deal done in 2005. And now, we're paying the price. So, thank you.
To the chair. So, the money that we get from the airport is in rent and fuel right now. Is that all?
Yes, we get it from the master ground lease, which we get monthly, and we get it from the fuel concession fees, which they pay us as well.
Okay.
And we have a few smaller other sources of revenue, but nothing compared to that.
And they're putting in signage, correct? Billboard signs, electric billboards, yea, nay?
There are discussions about that, but I strongly recommend that we don't get into that topic right now. It will come up as another city business matter in the future.
I'm just looking for money, sniffing it out. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But I know we're looking for money, but people just simply have to pay their rent. And if they're not paying their rent, we're going to have to dip into our general fund, so... Why don't we know? They are paying the rent, but the biggest, we're operating at a shortfall. I mean, our city manager just mentioned that.
To the chair.
Of course.
Do you know off the top of your head what the shortfall is right now? What we bring in and what we have to fork out?
I don't have those additional details, but I can let you give estimates about 200, 220,000 annually that we're falling short.
220?
It's somewhere between 200 to 300, I believe.
200 to 300?
But as I said, we can make this a discussion action item. Again, the weeds of it, but I'm not prepared to discuss this. I don't think Fernandez is either. So, if we want to talk about the budget moving forward, we can bring those additional resources to talk about educationally.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Montero, for mentioning that this is not a contract that we came into, which is obviously disadvantages, Desmond. We're at a disadvantage here, so, but, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
You did a great job. Thank you. For our third presentation, I'd like to call IT Manager Josh Armstrong to come to the podium.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, elected officials. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this technology update and introduce some new public-facing technology that we have. I'd like to briefly introduce you to Nate, our new multilingual AI chatbot, and share some exciting improvements that we're making to the public Wi-Fi system, as well as we have an interactive activity that'll be with that. So, everyone take out their cell phones. Just make sure that they're on mute, please. We're also going to touch on some tech infrastructure projects as an update that support behind the scenes of both the city operations of public safety and our capital projects. So, let's get into it. So, meet Nate. Nate is an AI-powered chatbot that supports multiple languages. It's currently live on both the city and the police department's websites. It's capable of automatically updating. It actually scrapes the main city website and the police department's website every Sunday and pulls in the new information that it finds. It's able to help residents find forms, department information, event pages, and more. Whether if you're looking for a permit, a park, a council agenda, Nate can actually get you there. To introduce some of the features, I have my IT analyst here, Eric Mendoza, that's going to walk through some of the multilingual capabilities of the system.
So, you can find Nate at the bottom part of the website. You can ask him any question in any language. He will answer back in the language you ask it. Yes, it is bilingual. And it will answer it actually correctly. El Calde de Hawthorne is Alex Vargas. I asked, who is the mayor of Hawthorne in Spanish? Then it actually corrected my, what I asked, and it says, El Calde de Hawthorne is Alex Vargas. Then you can ask it, where are the parks? And it'll go down the line and explain every single park that we have in the city. And if you go to the police department side, it also has the same concept. You guys got a question? Sorry. How do we pay for our fix-it ticket? Then it explains to you how you pay for a fix-it ticket, the discounts, and information off the website. So, it doesn't pull information every Sunday. So, if we update today, you can't ask a question about it tomorrow because it will update on Sunday.
It could work.
Any questions you guys want to ask for the website?
You said like languages, like how many languages does it have into this? It's like probably the multitude of them, right?
Multitude, multiple languages.
There's probably already an established translating bank out there that just gets used for everything nowadays, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Anything else?
So, basically, that the Nate would be in all our social media type, like the webpage on City of Hawthorne and also the PD?
Correct. It's on the city website and the police website.
So, it'll be on the bottom. Then you click on that, he'll start talking.
And he started asking the questions, yes.
Thank you.
Very nice.
This is really helpful. I know just for it to be an AI intelligent source. Do we get any information about the inquiries? Do we get any data? I mean, not that I'm asking for it, right, or anything, but I just want to know if there is some that we get back, like how many, who tapped in, what kind of questions, stuff like that?
Well, he's bringing back the presentation. Yes, we do get the analytics, and that's actually part of the training where we can see where the system is not able to provide...
Oh, actually, that's good. That's actually good. Go ahead.
I actually tried this a couple of weeks ago when it came up. And I asked it to give me information about gang graffiti and gang activity in the area and who should I call? And it actually gave me two answers. It told, gave me the graffiti removal, and it also gave me the PD information. So, it's very, very good.
Correct. And if you get the wrong answer, then we can actually correct it on the website. So, it only gives you information that it finds on our website. So, you can't ask it anything about, you know, a math problem or anything. You just can ask it, you know, our information.
Thank you so much. Awesome. Thank you for presenting.
I'm not quite done yet.
Oh, my, I mean, it's just that transition right here.
So, for the next steps, we are looking to integrate it with our My311 solution so that when you're actually interfacing with Nate, you'll be able to create a service ticket right there instead of it directing you to someplace else. You'll be able to just create the ticket automatically. We're also looking at how we can integrate it with X, Facebook Messenger, Signal, all the other platforms so that you have other multiple ways of being to interface with the solution. As I mentioned, with training it, we're also, it's a constant process of helping it understand Hawthorne terminology so that it knows what Hawthorne is and how to respond back to our citizens. All right, switching gears, we're going to talk about the public Wi-Fi system that we actually have out in the parks and in our city buildings. We actually do have public Wi-Fi out there. We've had it for close to eight years now. As we've built out the infrastructure, we've been adding it to all of our parks. This is a short list of where it exists today. The current guest system or the public system is just simply COH Guest. It's kind of boring. We're interested in looking at some ideas of what to call it that better fits Hawthorne. COH Guest, right, City of Hawthorne Guest, what is that? Is it real? Should I connect to it or is it going to steal all of my information? So, one of the ways that we're looking at, try to name it, is we're testing out some new technology as well that makes the presentations more interactive. So, with that, I'd like you to pull out your cell phones, and the public can do this as well. Go ahead and scan the QR code. And the system's going to ask you a simple question. What should we call the city's public Wi-Fi? We're interested in feedback. There are a couple of choices there that you're going to see. And these are the choices that you're actually going to see. So, feel free to select one or all of them, whichever. I'm not going to, you know, have an open field there for just anybody to type in whatever they feel like since it is, you know, an open meeting.
We should do Josh Hawthorne for the IT guru here that did all of this, you guys.
So, it looks like we got 20 folks up there, 21, 24. So as we move forward, uh, you can actually see in real time what folks are selecting. This particular tech, we actually have the, uh, the ability to make it more interactive. Uh, we can ask questions. We can have, uh, question-answer sessions. Um, and as you can see, the slides are, uh, moving. So Hawthorne Connected seems, seems to be the most pop- popular. And we're given a couple of minutes before we, uh, move on here. Actually seeing, uh, thirty-eight folks.
Hello.
On the system.
Oh, Josh, I love this. We definitely need to have this at the Business Expo.
Business Connect?
Yeah. No, no, no. The Business Expo that's coming on Thursday. This would be so cool to have this out there asking people, um, oh, does it capture their phone number so that we can pull that data and then send information to them?
There are ways, um, of, of course, with any other system, there are tiers. The more features, the more it costs.
Yeah. I was just wondering, like, this would be so cool when people are coming through to ask them, you know, how does they, what should we call the city's public Wi-Fi to come through, but it's, you know, maybe we can ask them to, um, agree to us being able to contact them via inner, uh, cellphone of updates. Um, and then when we're having events for the city, um, events, we can text them, but this is just another way to get more people, um, aware of the stuff that's going on in our city if we can collect that data. But I know we have to have permission to do that, and so maybe you can include that too when they, you know, look it up. Do I have your permission to contact you, blah, 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 and then ask them if, um, they, which name do they like for the City of Hawthorne Wi-Fi? Just a suggestion, but I definitely want that at the Business Expo.
So it's, it's looking like everybody likes, uh, the Good Neighbor Wi-Fi. It was actually one of our favorites, so. So what's next? Switching back to the Wi-Fi itself.
One, uh, uh, observation, because I thought about the Good Neighbor Wi-Fi, but we want to promote Hawthorne. Not too many people knows about, uh, Good Neighbor, right? People who lives here a long time ago knows that. So, and, and I'm going to ask you the next question, then you can answer later. What it will take for us to make Hawthorne the entire city Wi-Fi, right? Because we got a lot of people coming to town, uh, especially, you know, they're going to come from the Olympic, from the World Cup, from, from the world, and if they see that, oh, Hawthorne have Wi-Fi, they can come and stay in our hotels and, and eat in our restaurants. So think about that.
Work through the city manager's office and, uh, help out with that.
Perfect answer.
I'm going to need a bigger budget.
But, um, Josh, uh, were you going to jump? Okay, um, but that's not too far off, man. You know, the idea of like probably getting the Wi-Fi specifically down our corridors and then some of our, uh, down Hawthorne Boulevard from like Osagundo down through Rosecrans. Uh, when we, when we did the, uh, ret- retrofitting of the streets, you know, with the storm drains and everything, we laid down, um, fiber optic cable for this purpose. So it's, the infrastructure is there. And then we also did some branches that go into some of the residential streets from Hawthorne Boulevard, east and west, um, into Burley Track and into the Ramona Track. So, uh, we have some type of infrastructure there. But, uh, but then just real quick, but, you know, any, any place that any of our visitors are coming already have Wi-Fi, like the hotels already have Wi-Fi. So we got to take that into consideration, and some of our bigger businesses have Wi-Fi as well. So it's just, uh, the corridor, corridors in which we want to entice people. It's, it's not a, not too many steps to be able to implement.
To that point, um, we've actually explored this be, um, be, uh, before. We do have some infrastructure throughout the city. That's actually why we started in the parks and the city facilities, um, to, to allow the telcos that actually do have, um, uh, you know, all the trucks, the manpower, the call centers, the, um, uh, ability to maintain billion-dollar infrastructure, right? So, um, yes, we do have Wi-Fi along Hawthorne Boulevard. Uh, sorry, we have fiber optic along Hawthorne Boulevard that, uh, could be used for purposes later. So, uh, for the, for, for the public Wi-Fi itself, uh, we're in the process of replacing the aging access points. As I mentioned, we, we've had this out in the park for close to, to, to eight years now. Uh, the average life expectancy of most electronic devices is five, five years, so it's, so it's definitely time. Uh, we're launching a new, uh, captive portal. The captive portal is, is the little website that, that, that you see when you immediately, uh, log on to it. We're working to, um, uh, brand it, make it look a lot more interesting than what it looks like to, to a day. It's, it's, it's very, very boring. Um, and we're interested in installing signs in the public buildings and, and in the parks to actually advertise that it exists, which is why we need a better name. With that, um, I'm going to zoom out for a moment, uh, look at the broader effort to modernize, to, to modernize how, how the city serves, serves the, uh, residents and just a, a snapshot of the few items that we have currently underway. With this, we have, of course, uh, uh, Wordly, City Bot, and Nate. Uh, we're currently up- upgrading the Tyler Munus system. We have a, a consultant that is on board helping us in our human resources department to, uh, onboard their processes into the system. Uh, the ever-changing desktop and laptop replacement, expanding the Wi- the Wi-Fi footprint and one of the largest one, which is supporting all of our capital projects, right? Uh, we have the infrastructure project, which is, uh, replacing the microwave system that supports all of our, uh, city facilities. This, this is one, one area that I'm, um, actually, uh, proud of and stands Hawthorne apart from many of the other cities because we do maintain our own microwave system. We don't rely upon telcos that charge the city monthly. We actually have our, our own infrastructure, um, whereas, uh, many of the other cities have to pay your AT&amp;Ts, your time, time orders a monthly fee in order to, um, uh, get data to the city buildings, whereas we do not. So with that, I'd like to open it up to any further questions.
Go to the chair.
Okay, uh, Josh, just seriously, because, you know, uh, you know that during the COVID, uh, we learned, uh, that the majority of the residents of Hawthorne, especially those who had children in the schools, didn't have access to high-speed internet, and that was a big problem. Uh, and that's what I was talking about, you know, make Hawthorne Wi-Fi everywhere is, is the, the notion that we know there is a lot of population still in Hawthorne that are low-income families that struggle paying their bills every month, and, and that is one of the things that actually the school district, uh, pay for their Wi-Fi every month during the COVID so they could get, uh, uh, online classes. Uh, so that's kind of thing that we, uh, as a body here should be start thinking about, how can we make Hawthorne more accessible to all these beautiful programs that we have implementing, you know, implemented, you know, like the AI, the, uh, the net, all those things, and the, and the, um, 311 app. So a lot of people sometimes have difficulty to connect. So that's, that's my pet peeve is how can we do it? Thank you.
Uh, to the chair. Josh, thank you so much for the presentation and thank you just for your efforts. I know last year we talked a lot about AI and bringing AI to Hawthorne, and here we are. Uh, so thank you. Um, and I know that we're also looking for, uh, uh, new hires in your department, and I'm going to continue to push that. Uh, we're just going to grow in our AI involvement in various departments, but, um, especially for what we're doing right now, just the interaction with, uh, the, the bot and just being able to have Wordly that has sixty languages that could be translated. There's been, you know, concerns from the community that they feel oftentimes, uh, unable to come to council because there isn't a language for them. So now there's not that excuse anymore, right? They could come and they could speak in their own language comfortably and not be intimidated and know that they could be, um, translated so that we could understand exactly what, what their concerns are. So just those efforts alone with the city manager and those that brought Wordly, I want to thank you guys. I, I want to continue to just push. And then maybe at some time host an open house for some of these students that are looking to go into engineering and, um, you know, other IT efforts and, and, uh, just make it a, a full day of just all of us learning together. And, uh, I look forward to that, but thank you so much, and you're looking very sharp tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great job. This is great information, and, uh, it's true. And we talked about AI, you know? Uh, Councilwoman Angie Reyes talked about it. We talked about it then, and, you know, man, you type something into your search engine and it already gives you the AI response and then the, the real-world response, you know? I lean on the AI response a lot of the times and look into what it tells me, so. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
American Lung. American Lung Association presentation. Mayor Pro Tem Montero.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think I'm going to present you Kimberly Peck, the Health Promotion Manager, and Jasmine Hernandez, that's going to talk to us about, um, smoke-free on the multi-complex apartment buildings. Take it over. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much. Um, good evening, Mayor Vargas, and members of city council, city staff, and residents. Um, thank you so much for having us tonight. I'm Kimberly Peck.
And I'm Jasmine Hernandez.
And like, uh, they mentioned, we're, um, with the American Lung Association, and we will be discussing how to protect residents from secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing. So, um, we are funded to work in Hawthorne through the LA County Department of Public Health Tobacco Control and Prevention Program, and we've been working Hawthorne for about a year now. Um, we've been doing educational presentations. We've, uh, surveyed residents, spoken with landlords, as well as attended community events to hand out resources and educational materials.
Yeah, and so as part of our outreach, we do like to highlight smoking cessation resources. So the first one is KICCA California, where you could go to kicca california.org and you can get skilled coaches or personal quit plans. The next one is Lung Helpline, and by calling 1-800-LUNGEUSA, you can get access to licensed RNs, respiratory therapists, and also certified tobacco treatment specialists. So let's say you've been diagnosed with asthma, COPD, lung cancer. You can call this number and it's more personalized and they can develop a plan for you. Um, one thing that we do like to highlight is that these resources are free to the public.
Yeah, and so the project that we've been working on in Hawthorne is about secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing. And by multi-unit housing, I mean apartments, condos, any residence that has two or more units, so also duplexes and townhomes. And the reason that we talk about secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing is obviously because smoke travels. It can travel through open windows and doors, but also through cracks in the walls, um, plumbing, ventilation, electrical outlets. And so because of this, if you live in sec- in, uh, multi-unit housing, you're much more likely to be exposed to secondhand smoke than residents who live in single-family homes. And this is important because obviously secondhand smoke exposure is harmful. The Surgeon General has declared that there's no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke, and that's because it can contribute to lung cancer, heart disease, and trigger asthma attacks.
And we have been able to talk to a multitude of Hawthorne residents. So we've gone to different community events, schools, churches, um, laundromats, and we've been like understanding their personal experiences with secondhand smoke in their own houses. So this is including individuals living in single-family homes and, uh, multi-unit housing. And from this, we are also able to better gauge and understand their views on, uh, these policies, like for example, smoke-free, um, multi-unit housing policies.
So from the surveys that we did, about sixty percent of residents in Hawthorne shared that they currently live in multi-unit housing, and two in five reported that they have been bothered by drifting secondhand smoke inside their home in the past year. Sixty-three percent reported that they were bothered by secondhand smoke in common areas within their complexes, and the majority, almost ninety percent, said that they would prefer to live in a completely smoke-free property.
Yeah, so overall, we can see that there is strong support for, from residents for these policies. So again, it's including, um, individuals in single-family homes as well. And many residents would be in favor of smoke-free indoor private apartment units. So that's almost ninety percent of the residents that we've surveyed. And then almost eighty percent of the residents would be in favor of private spaces like balconies and patios. And overall, ninety percent of residents said they would be in favor of outdoor common areas. So that includes courtyards, um, outdoor walkways, and also hallways. And overall, eighty-one percent of residents did agree that all multi-unit housing should be required to be smoke-free and bait-free.
And, uh, just to note also, I did hand out, uh, uh, some handouts to you all beforehand, and there, there is a flyer that the county made with all the data from the surveys that we collected. Um, but one of the best practices to protect residents from secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing is for, uh, there to be a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy, and a comprehensive policy would include some of the following main elements. One is that it would include coverage of all multi-unit housing residents, so that's apartments and condos, duplexes and townhomes, like I mentioned before. It would also include one hundred percent smoke-free units. So that's inside individual units as well as on patios and balconies. It would include outdoor common areas in multi-unit housing, and it would include a section for equitable enforcement.
So just a little bit more on equitable enforcement. Uh, we can break it down into these four categories. So the first one, as I mentioned, is in education. So that's in providing the public with more smoking cessation resources that are free to them. Uh, the second one is in signage. So this is in requiring HOAs and landlords to notify residents, update their leases, and we also do have sample verbiage that they can include into those leases that we can share with you all today. Um, another, um, aspect of equitable enforcement is in landlord focus. So that's in shifting the focus from residents to landlords, and in this way, we can avoid criminal sanctions or police involvement. And last but not least is in the designation of secondhand smoke as a nuisance. So in this way, we can give tenants or residents a little bit more power in creating a smoke-free environment in their apartment complex.
And so there are already several cities that have smoke-free multi-unit housing policies. Currently in LA County alone, there are twenty cities that have policies like this, and just to zoom in a little bit on Hawthorne, you can see that some of the neighboring cities that have these policies are Torrance, Manhattan Beach, and Compton. And so we'd be able to provide sample policies, and then there's also model ordinance in the packets that I handed out.
And these are just some of the benefits that these types of policies can have. So for example, it'll create a healthier environment. Um, there'll be like less cigarette butts on the floor, less discarded e-cigarettes on the floor. Um, also protects non-smokers, minimizes the risk of fire, and also provides economic benefits to landlords. So we can see that in decreased insurance rates, um, also, uh, less they have to spend on maintenance and cleaning costs as well. And we've also talked to a variety of people that are trying to quit smoking that say that these types of policies can actually encourage them or motivate them to quit smoking and just develop a, a better plan for them overall.
Yeah, so thank you so much again for taking the time to hear from us tonight. We really enjoyed working in Hawthorne the last year, and it's been great to speak with all of the residents. We've heard from a lot of them how this impacts their daily lives, so I'm glad that we've been able to, uh, pass that information along to you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have our contact information, um, if you have any, would like any more information.
Thank, thank you, ladies, for presenting. Let's give them a round of applause.
Yeah.
Like, I really, uh, I mean, I, I liked your presentation and I liked all the data that you gave us. I'm interested in looking into this, so I just want to just preface whatever, anything I'm going to ask or say. But I think we need to make the distinction between privately-owned townhomes or condos and, you know, those that are rented out. So, because, you know, it's like I buy a home, and who's going to tell me, don't smoke inside your house and stuff, you know? Don't do this inside your home. So that, we have to make that distinction. If it's an established group of condos that are for rent and it's just like rental, that's all, that's all that it is, you know, then that's something that could all that it is, you know, then that's something that could be enforced by whoever the landlords are. And then obviously apartments are, you know, are such and then privately, like single residential units, you know, that's a different story. But do you got, I just don't want to just come up, have legislation that we just pass and resolutions and ordinances just to simply be a feel-good measure and then we walk away, we could check off a box and say we did something in Hawthorne. But that's why I need to pose to you guys, you guys are proposing this, what are the methods of enforcement when it comes to this? Do you have examples? Do you have a method? Or is it just going to just sit on the shelves, these regulations? What do you have that's solid and that's a method of enforcement?
Thank you, yeah, that's a great question. There definitely are instances where if there's not a good enforcement piece, it's like you said, it's just kind of on the books. So that's definitely a good question. There is in the packet, there's the Smoke-Free Multi-Unit Housing Enforcement Guide, and it actually breaks it down. The ones that are in green are the ones that the Public Health Law Center likes the most and then there's yellow and red. So like Jasmine had mentioned, things like criminal enforcement, we obviously want to stay away from. Eviction, we want to stay away from. But these people, many of whom we've spoken with, you know, they feel trapped in their homes because their neighbors smoke and their children have asthma, their furniture smells like smoke because their neighbors smoke and they go to their landlords and their landlords either don't want to do anything or can't do anything. So yeah, there's a lot of options in here and I think we had a slide on it. So it's a lot about public education, it's a lot of signage, you can add it to the lease. And we've actually spoken with a lot of landlords who already, in Hawthorne, already have smoke-free buildings and they didn't seem to really have an issue enforcing it, which I found pretty surprising. But they all had a little bit of different methods, but we did interviews with them where we talked in depth about it. And yeah, they said it was fairly easy to enforce, you know, sometimes they had to have conversations with tenants, sometimes multiple times, sometimes written warnings. But yeah, there's this breakthrough. The green ones are the good ones. And yeah.
No, but I, no, yeah, that's fine. So when somebody rents, they agree to certain things. So that's already something in agreement between renter and landlord. So that's already there. What you guys are asking us is to have like some type of ordinance within the city. So how does that supplement what's already, you know, what each landlord already has within its agreements? Like how does what you're asking supplement that or supersede or, I mean, what's the purpose really?
Sure. Yeah, well, we're actually, we're just sharing some best practices, you know, that cities can do to protect residents. And the ones that I mentioned, that's just some. A lot of the residents that we spoke with do not have policies in their leases. And so, yeah, we've spoken with people who've gone to their landlords and said, my neighbor smokes and they just won't do anything about it. And so now this person lives somewhere where they're maybe being exposed to, I mean, secondhand smoke has 70 chemicals in it that cause cancer. Children who live in apartments have high rates of asthma than children who live in single-family homes, so yeah, if the landlord doesn't want to do anything.
And you know, actually, thank you for mentioning that. There are, like I said, there's like agreements and those are very stressed, they're stressed in some agreements and then there's others where it's not stressed within the agreement. So I think that that's something still that the city could take on as an initiative, but...
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So back in March of 2021, we did pass an ordinance, secondhand smoke ordinance, and that by ordinance, we prohibit common areas, enclosed common areas of multi-unit residential housing to not allow smoking. And along with other public areas where even it may be outdoors, like dining areas, public events, seating areas, public transit station or stops, these are all prohibited from smoking. So we do have some, but I think I recall back in 2021 when we drafted this ordinance, we did want to stay away from possibly challenging someone's constitutional right to smoke inside their own home. So that was an issue and I think that was controversial at that time. I don't know if there's been a settled case on that issue, but because of that, we did prohibit smoking in common areas in multi-units, but only enclosed area. And I don't even know the science behind whether outdoor common area smoking has that kind of effect of secondhand smoke if it's outdoors. So just to let you know that we did pass an ordinance back in 2021.
So Mr. City Attorney, on my behalf, could you just look at what's included here and see if there's information here that could bolster what we already have, see that things, if things have changed when it comes to certain...
Oh, I'll take a look at it.
I could also share information with you. There is some information from the Public Health Law Center. There is no constitutional right to smoke, but there is a constitutional right to clean air where you live. So they have a whole handout on that.
Well, I'm more interested in legal challenges. That's certainly very costly. It may be a policy, but what I would be looking for is case pressing.
Relax, relax.
Sorry, that's their line, so.
To the chin. Thank you. Kimberly and Jasmine, thank you. You know, your organization has been coming to the city of Hawthorne for many years. And back in 2021, when I had requested that we implemented a policy, it was not based on mandates, right? Because nobody likes mandates. That includes during COVID, right? Everybody was mandated to do this, do that. It was not very popular. And then there was a law too that Sacramento was trying to pass with regards to Coca-Cola drinks. Remember that? They were trying to limit how much Coca-Cola you could drink. But I just basically want to say that secondhand smoke in multi-to-housing is an issue if you're a renter. I'm a renter. I'm also a grandmother of eight and so I'm aware, as we've spoken in the past, Kimberly, about how that air can escape through your vents and whether it's your heating system, your air conditioning system, and it's true, right? We were so hands-on with regards to a campaign, an awareness campaign, and that was kind of the thought behind the policy, just to bring awareness and have a pilot project in a sense to just really bring eyes on the issue. And we implemented it so strongly here that we had departments that are smokers have to leave the grounds here at Hawthorne. They can't be anywhere near City Hall. Yes, it's a joke. It's a joke and everybody knows the joke. And we actually have had individuals to leave City Hall and walk away, far, far away. And I'm glad that they're doing that because they're respecting the fact that we, you know, at the end of the day, want to make sure that we're breathing clean air, right? But I can't fault individuals that, you know, that's their right. That's what they want to do, that's what they want to do, like any other smoke, right? But I do appreciate the fact that we have partnered in the past, we continue to partner today. We do the survey ongoing and anything we could do to promote, you know, a healthier breathing environment and just bring to the apartment owners and complexes that have, you know, renters. We have, what, Councilmember Montero, 80% of renters?
Seventy-two percent.
Okay, so there's a lot of renters. And that's all we could do, is just continue to push on the awareness and to address the secondhand smoke. And so I really appreciate your guys' efforts and coming out and being a vendor, tabling at our events and here tonight. And I know it's a long night, but we have really great stuff that we're doing here in Hawthorne and I didn't want to miss the opportunity to address the American Lung Association, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kimberly and Jasmine, for coming because like I told you my story, secondhand smoke killed my mom. She never smoked in one single cigar in her entire life, but my dad smoked and she died at 67 of lung cancer. And my dad lived to be 93 years old. See? And to me, you know, I hate smoke because I'm allergic to it. Every time I go around, next day my sinus is acting up. So, and I see this survey and I want to say thank you because 87%, almost 90% of the people living in those apartments saying they want a free smoking environment. So and that is what I ask you guys over here because I want our city attorney to look in what we had in the books and then maybe to amend it, to justify the public crime because they want us to do something. And like Mr. Mayor said, we're not going to reinforce it. It's basically it's a contract that has to be between the tenants and the landlord. So they always have to sign the lease agreement and that lease agreement, like I did in one of my building, is no smoking. And it's right there, written on the lease agreement. So of course I'm not going to evict them or throw them out, but I will give them a warning, say, you know, you cannot smoke here. So that is kind of thing, the message we want to send out there, that Hawthorne is want to clean air. And we know, and I used to be on the school board, one prevalent, you know, school, it was asthma in the children. Not just the smoke, but because all the freeways we have, because we have all this, you know, bad air. So asthma is an issue in Hawthorne, it's been for a long time. So and we don't want to continue to have the same habits. And people have to understand, smoking is bad for your health and it's costing American taxpayer billions of dollars in healthcare cost, even for their own pocket. And then we have to do more research, research, research to come up with strategy how to save lives. So that is where to me, you know, I would support women that and to justify that 62% of those people living in those rented, on your survey, say they want a free smoking environment. So you got my blessing.
Sure.
Thank you.
To the chair.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Quick question. When you talk about smoking, because I'm 100% on board with what you're saying, you're including the weed smoking and vaping and things like that also, right? And I'm curious to know what constitutional amendment gives us the right to clean air? And I'm only asking that because if you can tell me what that is and maybe I can sue my neighbors for smoking weed all day long and, because I have to endure that. But do you know what amendment that is that gives us the right to clean air?
I can look it up. I just know that the Public Health Law Center does have a paper on it.
I'd be curious to know that because I don't, I'm not familiar with that particular amendment.
You know what? I'm going to ask my city attorney, our city attorney, to look that up for us, our right to clean air. Could you look that up for us, sir?
Under our constitutional amendment, I can tell you right now there isn't such an amendment.
Exactly.
Oh, oh. Okay, let's just finish.
So there goes my lawsuit against my neighbors.
But to, to answer your other question though, yes, it would be not just tobacco smoke, but also marijuana and e-cigarettes. And I think the handout, if it doesn't go into more detail, we can provide the detail about, that was a question that we asked, if they experienced tobacco smoke or marijuana and definitely a lot of people did say that it was marijuana, which is obviously a different smell. Much so.
All right. Thank you, ladies, for being here, your presentation, very important. And on my behalf, I was asking some questions to make sure that anything we have is just like I said, purposeful and done and that we could enforce. So that's just my interest in passing things. Thank you, ladies.
Yes. I know, I know.
Certificate of Recognition to the city's community partners.
Oh my goodness, finally, finally. I know most of you out there are like yawning, I'm watching you guys and I'm like, don't do that, I'm getting sleepy too. I'm so sorry. It takes, you know, my presentation to the very end, but there's so many of you that we want to make sure we didn't miss out. I am so honored to have various organizations here this evening that provide a service to the community of Hawthorne, to our service providers offering an abundance of care from mental health to homeless issues, you know, wraparound services, education. I could just go on and on and on. What I'm going to do is I'm going to name the organization and then I'm going to have you really quickly come up and just, if you will, just provide a quick snippet of words. But most of the certificates of recognition reads like this, so I'm going to read the body of the certificate and then I'll call out the organization. As I call the organization, please come up to the podium. And then we're going to take a group picture here inside the horseshoe with your certificates of recognition. The City of Hawthorne recognizes this St. Margaret's Center for your ongoing dedication to empowering families in our community. We appreciate your organizational professionalism through social services, addressing and improving our low-income and homeless population. Your efforts have provided a broadened access to essential resources and has exemplified your profound commitment to public health equity and human dignity. Through your mission and ongoing dedication, you have made a meaningful and enduring impact on the well-being of our community. This day recognized, the 22nd day of April, 2025. Sign the mayor and the city council. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, mayor and city council members, staff and residents. We are so honored to partner with the City of Hawthorne for, gosh, like 30 years now. And our services really are for low-income residents of the community, everything from immigration processing to food programs to homeless programs, just a whole array of wraparound services. And I particularly want to thank the city and say how much I, I'm sorry, I'm tired.
It's okay.
I'm really in awe of you in terms of having, you know, a homeless coordinator on staff for your city. I mean, you really are in the vanguard of cities in that sense and I really applaud you. That was the word, applaud. I applaud you for that work and we're very honored to partner with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Maddie Agnes, for coming. We go a long way, 30 years, actually. Exactly. So we've been working this city together, so it's my pleasure to you again.
Yes, thank you.
Don't leave, just one more quick second. I'm going to call another organization and then we're going to take a group picture in the horseshoe. Department of Mental Health, the City of Hawthorne recognizes Los Angeles County Department of Mental Health for your ongoing dedication to enhancing the state of mental health in our community. Do we have anyone here from Department of Mental Health? Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to say a few words?
Well, thank you so much, everyone who's here. I really appreciate being part of Hawthorne and also my Hawthorne PD family. We really embrace homelessness and try to do the most to help them. So I'm very thankful for this community, this city, and for everyone here.
Thank you so much. Please don't leave. Thank you. Hawthorne Police Department, the City of Hawthorne recognizes Hawthorne Police Department for your outstanding dedication to serving our community through personalized engagement, implementation of program initiatives, and community collaborations. We sincerely appreciate your professionalism through addressing crisis and emergent needs of our residents. Thank you so much. Chief, are you here, chief? Go ahead, say a few words and I'm going to also ask the chief to come up. Go ahead. Thank you so much. Yes.
I appreciate it, sir. Thank you very much for the honor.
Don't leave, we're going to stick around. Did you want to go ahead and say something else?
Yeah, I appreciate everybody who came out today. It's a team effort with Alex here and Patty and our outreach team, Raul and Ovidio and Dulce and the administration at the department and the administration here who allows us to do what we need to do to get people help and clean things up, so thank you.
Thank you. We're so proud of everybody, everybody. The City of Hawthorne recognizes Telehealth Van for your unwavering dedication to providing mobile mental health services to underserved populations in our community. We commend your commitment to accessible and compassionate care. Congratulations, Telehealth Van. Rambo and Crystal.
Yes, thank you so much, mayor, council members, for the opportunity just to be able to provide it, get started with it during COVID and watch it grow. Now going from low income into the residence, we're just really honored for this, so thank you.
Thank you, Telehealth. Don't leave, we're going to do photo. To Military and Veterans Affairs, City of Hawthorne recognizes Military and Veteran Affairs, County of Los Angeles, for your dedication to supporting and advocating for the service members, veterans, and military families within our community. the service members, veterans, and military family, families within our community. Congratulations.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Tanisha Rogers. I work for Military and Veterans Affairs. I would just like to thank Dulce for the collaboration. I've been in Hawthorne for almost six months now, and I have really gotten to know some of the residents, some of the homeless folks that I help out that are not veterans, and I just want to thank you for the collaboration again.
Thank you. Don't go away. Uh, the City of Hawthorne would like to recognize Los Angeles Centers for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, uh, LA CADA, for their ongoing dedication to supporting and empowering individuals experiencing homelessness through compassionate, comprehensive substance use and behavioral health services. Congratulations.
Thank you, mayor, mayor, potential, uh, council members. Uh, we are very honored, uh, to consider ourselves part of this community. Um, we find that our capabilities are, um, not, uh, they're informed by our partners, right? And, uh, we would like to thank Sergeant Espinoza, Detective Khan, Dulce for, for your leadership, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Don't go away, please. Did you want to say something? Did you want to say something?
I'm just, I'm just honored to be here in front of you all today, and, um, it's a pleasure to be able to serve the community, and, um, it's really shows the community's strength by the way you guys, uh, treat your most vulnerable population.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much. And our last organization, the Venice Family Clinic. City of Hawthorne recognizes Venice, Venice Family Clinic for their exemplary dedication to providing comprehensive, high-quality medical, medical care to community members in need. Thank you so much to Venice Family Clinic.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much, City of Hawthorne, council members and everyone present. On behalf of Venice Family Clinic, we're just a small representation, myself, Rosio, and David present. I think what I do know, and it's wonderful to just see familiar faces here that I have collaborated with, we appreciate every single one of you. One of the things I do want to say as the last person speaking is that we continue to center humanity, and I think that the one thing that everyone that we collaborate with is centering humanity, and I think if we can, continue to do that in the trying times that we are experiencing right now, it will make a huge impact. And so I just want to say thank you, and I really appreciate everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I want, I want just to say something because, uh, I thought I'd recognize you guys, but I was kinda like, uh, because, you know, the, uh, Health and Dignity Center that, that I built under the Manila Garden Improvement at the York School, so I actually signed, uh, the paperwork to give that facility to the Hawthorne School District, so you guys could have the Venice Clinic at the York School. So thank you for being a part, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, and we appreciate that. I know that was, um, done with, um, Congresswoman Maxine Waters as well. So yes, again, on behalf of Venice Family Clinic, I want to keep saying that because obviously we're not all here. We do appreciate it is a clinic that we do serve, uh, primarily the pediatric population, um, and so that is also something to know as well, that we are present here. And so we're all around Hawthorne.
Yeah, and the Congresswoman is the one who brought me that money from the federal government to build that center.
Yes, and we appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Uh, and just in closing, I, I want to make sure we all grab a picture, I want to make sure that everybody has their certificate in their hand. Feel free to take off the, the label, and I just want to say how proud I am of all of you that have partnered with the City of Hawthorne in providing such great service. Thank you.
La Venice Family Clinic.
All right, guys, let's get back on the dice. All right, guys.
All right.
Madam Clerk, guidelines for oral communications?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954 dot three, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
I see no speakers that want to address the city council. Do we have, sir? Anybody else? Please form a line, right now's the time to form a line so we can see how deep our comment section is, please. All right. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Uh, my name is Ryan Richard, President Holly Park Neighborhood Association and Planning Commissioner, and today I just came here as I wanted to commend some of our city officials on something that we got, um, done this last planning commission meeting, specifically referencing, uh, Zone Text Amendment Z82025001. This amendment, what we worked on is actually consolidating some of the fees that are required for us to open businesses here in the City of Hawthorne. Um, and the reason I wanted to come here and actually specifically commend everyone for this, because I know it's been a big, big push for us to find ways to bring businesses here, and this kind of, uh, efficiency, going through reviewing our municipal code, doing things that cost us little money and save us money in man-hours, is some of the kind of initiative that we need to see more of in the city. So I wanted to just come here and specifically say that I really commend our city staff, our planning commission folks who went through and actually did this work, because this is something that will make restaurants more attractive to come here, will make Hawthorne a more, a more, um, dynamic place, specifically when we're looking at adding these hotels, finding spaces for folks to stay and continue to spend their money here, things that we're looking for. So just wanted to commend staff on that effort, and, um, that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hello there, uh, mayor and city council. My name is Jose Ochoa. I am the district representative for the state senator Laura Richardson. Uh, I came here today to invite everyone to our community cleanup event we're having. It's gonna be this Friday at eight AM to twelve. It's gonna be on the on and off ramps on Crenshaw Boulevard between 118 and 120th Street. And, um, you, you can RSVP to this event by calling our office at three one oh two seventeen forty-seven twenty-eight. All supplies will be provided by Caltrans, and we look forward to seeing, uh, people from our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and, uh, congratulations on your new role. Next speaker, please.
I'm sorry, what was your name? Do you have a car?
Uh, we, we have two offices, so we're now down, so I need to get the.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening. Lili Fernandez, Hawthorne, North Hawthorne Community Association. I wish that mine's was more, a little bit more positive, mine's is a little bit more of a concern out of a taxpayer and a longtime resident here in Hawthorne. There's a lot of talk coming from this council, long speeches, polished words, constant reminders of how much you know, but here's the reality, the city isn't seeing results. You ran on serving the City of Hawthorne, but that promise seems to have faded. You campaigned to bring real change, but instead of action, we get more problems. You keep saying you're committed to serving the wholeness, and yes, they deserve help, but not at the expense of ignoring the safety and quality of life, of the life of the taxpaying residents who keep this city running. What do we see instead? High-density buildings? Going up with no parking, more crime, and no real planning. The people who lived here for years are getting squeezed out of space and stability. We need parking permits all around Hawthorne. People shouldn't have to come home after a long days of work and spend their evenings circling the block just to find a space to park. That's unacceptable. Some of you have heard me for years with the same concern. I am still waiting. And there's no reason residents should have to come up here, meeting after meeting, voicing the same concern while nothing changes. We depend on you to make the right decisions for the community, not for your pockets. And that includes this sudden overjoy and obsession with bringing in cannabis shops. Who is that really for? Because it's not improving our neighborhoods, it's just adding more problems we already have. Here's the truth. Hawthorne deserves better. Less bragging, less personal gain, more real service. Start listening, start acting for us, the City of Hawthorne residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? If not, I declare oral communications closed order. Miss City Clerk, next items, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have six items on the consent calendar, they're items six through eleven for your consideration and approval. I'm actually going to pull item eight, uh, and we'll vote on that separate because Councilwoman Johnson will not be able to vote on that one. Uh, item six, Treasury, City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item seven, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five's agenda. Item nine, resolution number eight five two one, a resolution of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California, adopting the City of Hawthorne Safety Action Plan. Item ten, resolution number eight five two two, a resolution of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming May fourth, two thousand twenty-five through May tenth, two thousand twenty-five, as Municipal Clerks Week in Hawthorne. Item eleven, resolution number eight five two three, a resolution of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving a professional services agreement for labor compliance monitoring, monitoring with LDM Associates Incorporated for adoption.
I'll, I'll pull ten, please. Okay.
I'll make the motion to move.
The, all other items, if you could?
Yes, all items except ten. You're pulling ten, right?
Yes.
And I get a second?
Second. Please vote.
The votes are in.
Hold on. Nope.
Could you join the meeting?
There she is. Your vote, please.
It's giving me a, a manual background control.
Um, you haven't put it.
Oh, there it is. Thank you, engineer. There it is.
The voter influx, council and mayor and council voting, yes.
Item ten, discussion, um, in anticipation of Municipal Clerks Week, uh, May fourth through May tenth, um, I want to thank you for what you've been doing as our elected city clerk, but, um, you know, with the great staff that you had, you've been able to do a lot of things, uh, catching up on the, uh, minutes that were kind of let go by previous, uh, city clerks and, or whoever was there, you know? Thank you for modernizing. I know I've been slow to, you know, adapt to that, but I also, I, I do want to appreciate, appreciate you in public, okay, ma'am? So let's give her a round of applause, please.
Yay. Thank you.
And her staff, that's been great. So I'll make a motion. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voter inflects mayor and council voting yes on item 10. Now item eight.
I'll second it, but a quick, a quick comment. Ma'am, to talk about discussion of this whole AI stuff, is there any AI tool that we could use to maybe pass through some audio processing system that could probably lay out the AI? Do you have anything with the bar set?
I'm looking for that. I've been looking, but I haven't not.
Okay, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just, I make a second. That was, who made the first? So I'll make the second. Please vote.
Wait, no vote? Counsel. Perfect. The votes are in.
Oh, no, no, we're missing one vote.
No.
I am so sorry. Sorry, I forgot about that part, yes.
Voter inflects mayor and council voting yes.
There, there has to be something out there and then moving forward, we just process through that and then their focus could be on other things, right? Thank you, ma'am. Ordinances, please.
Item 12, ordinance number 2256, the second reading and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending Section 10.44.8080 effect of permission to load or unload of Chapter 10.44, loading and unloading zones of Title 10 vehicles and traffic of the Hawthorne Municipal Code and making a finding that this amendment is not a project in compliance with CEQA.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Please vote, everyone.
The votes are in. Voter inflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay, we have a presentation. Ms. Kimberly Beck. Ms. Kimberly Beck, do you have an agent doing this for you or? Oh, together with him, okay.
Don't, I was gonna say, yeah, don't we have to read the public hearing? Item 13.
Yeah, oh, Madam Clerk, you could read this into the record, but you still need to be.
Item 13, now is the time and place for a public hearing to consider adoption of the Draft Citizen Participation Plan, CPP, 2025 through 2029 Consolidated Plan and 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Home Programs. Recommended motion, the staff advises that the City Council conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding the Draft Citizen Participation Plan, 2025 through 2029 Consolidation Plan, and the 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan. Two, consider and adopt the Citizen Participation Plan, 2025 through 2029 Consolidated Plan and 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan, and authorize the City Manager or designate to submit the adopted plans to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Three, provide direction to the city staff regarding this methodology for adjusting CDBG and home budgets in the event that the city's annual 2025-2026 allocation amounts from HUD differ from current estimates. Four, authorize the City Manager or designate to execute all necessary grant agreements, certifications, and related documents required by HUD for the administration of the CDBG and home programs for the 2025-26 program year. Five, authorize the City Manager or designate to execute contracts with subrecipients, contractors, and professional service providers necessary to implement the CDBG and home-funded activities identified in the 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan. And six, authorize the appropriation of the 2025-2026 CDBG and home program funds consistent with the approved annual action plan.
The presentation will precede the public comments. Go ahead, ma'am.
Tonight, I'm going to introduce Mr. David Munoz with LDM and Associates to present our presentation.
Thank you, Kimberly, and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. Appreciate you all giving us the opportunity to discuss the Citizen Participation Plan, the 2529 Consolidated Plan, and the 2526 Action Plan. Since I know this is everyone's favorite topic, on a Tuesday at 8:00 p.m., I'll do my best to keep this brief. So just a quick rundown of show today. We'll provide a little bit of background. We'll talk through the consolidated plan, the action plan. We'll end with the recommendations that were just read by the city clerk, and we'll leave some time at the end for questions if there are any. So to start, why are we here? Two main programs that are funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, so federal programs. The first is the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG as it's commonly referred to. And the second is the Home Investment Partnerships, or Home Program. Both of these programs are intended to assist cities like Hawthorne to address the housing and community development needs of low and moderate income residents in particular. CDBG is a far, far more flexible funding source where you can do things like street improvements, housing, and public services. Whereas home, much like the name would allude to, is really restricted to the preservation and production of affordable housing. In order to continue receiving these funds and to keep HUD, to stay in good graces of HUD, the city is required to complete three planning documents at this stage. The first is the Citizen Participation Plan, which is in essence how the city plans to engage the public, its stakeholders. The second is the Consolidated Plan. One way to think of this is a five-year blueprint or investment strategy. On average, the city receives about a million in CDBG, 500,000 in home. So you're really looking at how are we going to invest these five and two and a half million dollars? And then finally is the Annual Action Plan. What are we going to do this year in order to accomplish that broader five-year vision? For those that are visual learners, much like myself, this is just really a visual representation of those planning documents and kind of that process that we went through in order to kind of develop these proposed recommendations. So in discussing the Consolidated Plan, which as a reminder is that five-year investment strategy, it's really an analysis of what the high priority housing and economic and community development needs of its low and moderate population are over the next five-year period. Based on community outreach and feedback, there were six high priority needs identified that would be addressed through six goals, which you kind of see on this graph that's represented on this slide here. In order to develop this five-year plan, there was a process that was followed. We surveyed residents, you know, met with stakeholders, hosted community meetings, and conducted a public hearings, much like today. And then based on that feedback and data analysis, we were able to develop what those priority needs and goals would be. Obviously, we would like to solve every problem that, you know, exists. However, there are some limitations. And so on this slide, we just represent the funding that is available through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development over the five-year period. So it's broken down by year and funding source. And so you can see on average, you're looking, you know, at eight and a half million dollars over the next five-year period, or about 1.6, 1.7 million dollars on an annual basis. So within those constraints of the resources that are available, this slide is really meant to kind of detail what those goals are, the six goals, the six needs that are addressed within each one of those goals, the funding that is estimated to be allocated to each one of those goals or to address that specific need, as well as the anticipated goals that will be achieved after that five-year period. So when you're looking at the goal outcome indicator column on this table, it's a five-year projection. So sometimes when you're looking at goal outcome indicators like this, it can be very daunting to say, how are we going to assist everybody? And so the way that HUD asks the city to approach a problem is to break it down into more bite-sized pieces. And that's really what the action plan is. What can we do this year to make progress on that five-year goal? So this is kind of a graphical representation of that, where you have your consolidated plan, the goals, and then you have five years to kind of accomplish that. And so you break it down into manageable pieces, it becomes a little bit easier to manage and make sure that you're keeping progress. Similar to the consolidated plan, there is a process that we followed, starting with the Notice of Funding Availability, then, you know, received applications from seven different organizations, conducted an eligibility review to make sure that it complies with the program requirements, that it addresses one of those goals that was identified in the consolidated plan, and that they have the capacity to comply with the nuances and the 200 pages of regulatory, you know, requirements that are part of these programs, unfortunately. And then finally, we published these documents for public review for a period of 30 days. Again, this, this slide just kind of restates what the, the resources that are available just for this year alone. And then based on that, we've kind of broken out the goals by program on the next two slides. So starting with CDBG, it's really intended to focus on three of the goals, public services, fair housing services, and capital improvements, or improvements here, public facilities and infrastructure. And so this table here details the specific activities or organizations, their respective funding amounts, as well as the goals that they will accomplish just in this one-year period to make inroads to that five-year goal that was established. Then in terms of home, it's really focused on the preservation and development of affordable housing. Again, this table follows that same structure as the previous one, where you have the various activities, their respective funding amounts, and the goals. And really, the theme with these dollars, because it is limited, is stretch, right? Stretch the dollars, stretch the impact, and oftentimes, stretch your patience as I get through this presentation. So the recommendations. They were already read by the city clerk, but in sum, it's just to conduct the public hearing, receive any feedback from the public, approve the plans. We'll submit them to HUD, and then we get to work. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
To the chair.
Yes. Oh, the amount, one year or five year? This one?
Yeah, so, yeah, I saw the second part of that. And so either you or Kimberly, how much are we receiving for CDBG from the, from HUD?
About one million.
It's less than, than we've ever had, huh?
It goes down every year generally historically for the last five years or so.
Yeah. And the whole, and the house, and the home funds?
Home fund's about 500,000.
Wow. Yeah. Okay.
Anybody else?
Specify more on that one for me, please?
Yes, so TRFC Behavioral Health Services is the Richstone Family Center.
Oh, the Richstone.
Yes, so they provide behavioral health services to families affected by domestic violence. And they've now been on their second year, and so far, they've demonstrated capacity.
Thank you, I'm familiar with them, thank you.
I'm looking at COH Section 108 Loan Repayment. What is that?
So last year, the city submitted an application for a Section 108 loan guarantee, which enables the city to take out five times the amount of its annual allocation. So, you know, we said, you get about a million dollars in CDBG. You, you're kind of like, well, what can I do with a million dollars in a year? And so HUD allows for the city to pull out five times that, so about five million dollars. And the city approved to use those funds for various public facility and park improvements. So a portion of that is going to the senior center, to the Ramona Park, Eucalyptus Park, and Jim Thorpe Park improvements. And that's kind of how that has been distributed. But in return for getting those five million dollars on such short notice, the city then has to repay that. The city has the option of using other sources of funds to repay that, or it can utilize its CDBG grant to kind of repay it back to HUD.
Yeah, well, I know we're in need of park renovations. I'm glad that Ramona's one of those, and we have some other parks coming. Yeah. Things have really changed from previous years. Yeah.
Are we good? Okay.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you, Kimberly.
I move to accept this presentation?
I'll second.
Please vote. I think that's what the... It's just a moment, did I make the correct? Okay, no, no, actually, yeah, I'll move to accept the presentation.
Nice second.
Okay, please vote on that. Accept the presentation.
The votes are in. Voter inflects mayor and council voting yes.
The presentation. Is there anyone who wish to provide comment on this hearing? Okay, if not, I declare the hearing close ordered. So now there's a motion to approve. I make a motion to approve the Draft Citizen Participation Plan, 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan and 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Home Programs. So I move to accept the actual plan.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. Voter inflects mayor and council voting yes.
City Manager's Consent Calendar, 14 through 21, Ms. City Clerk.
Item 14, Construction of Speed Humps on 118th Place from Felton Avenue to Inglewood Avenue. Item 15, Progress Payment Number Five and Final Acceptance in the amount of 783,575.03 due to CEQA Contractors Incorporated of Santa Fe Springs, California, for 120th Street Improvements, Crenshaw Boulevard, to Felton Avenue, Phase 2, Project Number 21-03. Item 16, Donation of Police Department Vehicle, Unit Number 613, to the El Camino Police Department. Item 17, Progress Payment Number One in the amount of 879,526.61 due to Martinez Landscape Company of Solmar, California, for City of Hawthorne New City Yard, Project Number 24-02. Item 18, Progress Payment Number Nine in the amount of 318,957.51 due to Doja Incorporated of Ontario, California, for the Zella Davis Park Renovation, Project Number 24-04. Item 19, Progress Payment Number Three in the amount of 428,495.72 due to Martinez Landscape Company Incorporated of Solmar, California, for General Maintenance, Project Number 22-05. Item 20, Progress Payment Number Three in the amount of 444,227.87 due to PCN3 Incorporated of Los Alamos, California, for City of Hawthorne New Senior Center, Project Number 24-03. Item 21, Progress Payment Number Eight in the amount of 1,390,009.52 due to Classic Engineering and Construction Incorporated of Orange, California, for Hawthorne Housing Rehabilitation of City-Owned Properties, 2023, Project Number 23-09. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the City Manager's Consent Calendar. May I have a motion to approve items 14 through 21?
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. Voter inflects mayor and council voting yes.
Can you please read the City Attorney's Consent Calendar, please?
Item 22, Claim for Bodily Injury by Brian Garrison. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city deny, City Council deny the claim by Brian Garrison. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the City Attorney's Consent Calendar. May I have a motion to approve item 22?
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. Voter inflects mayor and council voting yes.
Discussion by Vice, Vice Mayor Montero on AB 650?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, you know, the legislature is in session, and they have a lot of bills going on in Sacramento. And some of them, I think a few of them are good. The other ones is about 12 different bills trying to interfere with our ability to regulate zoning and land use. So, but this one, AB 65, is, is, is good because it's trying to reassess, in a sense, right? All the things about the housing element and to string partnership with the locals to support mental health, back local effort with state support, reduce strain on emergency service, and advance health equity. So it is, it is a good bill that the California League of Cities and the SABECAC is, is asking us to send a lot of support. is asking us to send letter of support. So, that is a good one, right?
I make a motion, well, would you like to make the motion for it? Please vote.
No, no, this one is good.
Oh, it's good.
So, just vote yes.
The votes are in? Voter in flex, mayor and council voting, yes.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Now, you have another one.
The next one is one of those bills that is trying to interfere with our local authorities. So, this bill actually was limit the city's authority to regulate alcohol sales based on community needs and the land use priorities. But that's a really bad one, okay? So, again, the League of Cities and the South Bay Cog and all the other asking us to send a letter opposing this bill, because again, it's trying to interfere with our authority to govern our licensing, okay? I'm done.
Would you like to make a motion? Second. Please vote.
The mayor wants to speed up.
I didn't hear the debate as to why, but, okay.
I just read it earlier.
It's just good and no good, that's all it is.
Yeah, just trust my judgment. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
The votes are in? Voter in flex, mayor and council voting, yes. Councilwoman Katrina Manning abstaining.
We have a, the South Bay, okay, 20, item 25, the South Bay Workforce Investment has a board, has seats on their board, their actual board for that group. And the terms for some of these past individuals have expired. And we have three new names that have been floated around, and I would like to, there have been a lot of takers, so let's be honest, but these are good individuals. They've been in our community. Oh, you want to move it along a little quicker, fine. Don Harris, I would like to nominate Don. These are the names, so we just vote, I'm not nominating anybody. Not Don Harris?
Is Don Harris from Republic or Don Harris of the Democrats?
Well, let me get there, let me get there. Let me get there.
He's both.
Don Harris, Municipal Relationship Manager with Republic Services. Mark Cueto, owner of MAC Business Solutions. Ike Balu, owner of Icon Architecture Group.
Why come you have those names, I don't have them?
Oh, no, it's in the packet. It's in the packet right here.
I made a motion to accept.
Second, please vote.
The air conditioning kicked in here somehow, because it's, all of a sudden, I'm getting dry air.
The votes are in? Voter in flex, mayor and council voting, yes.
Thank you, folks. Ms. City Clerk?
Thanks, everyone, for coming out and for all who stayed to the very end. Want to thank the mayor, that was so kind of you to. Thank my staff also. We are working very hard in the clerk's office to get everything caught up and to deal with minutes and records and things like that. But we are, we're doing it, and we're doing pretty good. So, I really do appreciate my staff, Joy, Myra, and Diana. For Municipal Clerks Week, please stay tuned, because we'll probably have coffee and donuts in the lobby. And we also want to celebrate what would have been Monica's anniversary. I believe her anniversary was in May. So, we're going to celebrate that as well. I've spoken with her relatives, and they are looking forward to coming out. And I'm looking forward to seeing all of you at the, at our coffee date. Everybody, have a great evening, thank you for coming.
Councilmember Fee Johnson?
Real quick, shout out to our two food vendors from this evening. We had great food from the Continental Gourmet Market, which is a Latin American gourmet grocery store, offering specialty foods and catering. The owner Sergio cooked up some of his famous empanadas for this evening, and they were delicious. And so, just for everybody to know, they're located at 12921 Prairie Avenue in Hawthorne, and they're open every day from 8 to 6:30. And then, our other vendor was Mom's Donuts, and they offer donuts, bakery items, bagels, breakfast sandwiches, lunch croissants, smoothies, teas, coffee, all the good things in a donut shop. And the owner Kevin served us some delicious donuts, made with a special recipe. He does it differently than other donut shops, and you can tell by the way they taste. He's located at 12831 Crenshaw Boulevard. So, thanks to both of those restaurants for sharing. And tonight, my prayers go out to Bill and also to Rodney, I think he already left. Both are dealing with medical and physical challenges, so you're in our prayers. Thanks to DJ, our Traffic and Public Works Engineering Department, for that awesome safety action plan. Guido for his, yeah, Guido for his airport report. And just a quick question with the, one of the questions that came up, because I'm not familiar with preferential parking, permitted parking. How do we, if somebody wants that, how do you go about getting that done in the city?
I think the first step is council directs the Public Works Department to look into it and do a study, and then they come back.
What would that study entail? I'm not familiar with this process.
And maybe the mayor might want to speak on this. I do recall, part of me being the city manager, that there was a moratorium put on permit parking. So, we can absolutely look into it, but to my knowledge, staff was directed not to move forward with permit parking.
I mean, I could speak to it when my turn comes around, if you would like for me to address it. But I don't want to take away from your time.
That's my last thing on my list, if you want to go ahead and.
I'll just wait till I get to my turn.
Okay.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Katrina Manning, please?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I have a few things on my list, I'm going to be quick tonight. Wanted to make sure that you all come out to our Business Expo. We're going to have dynamic speakers. Also, we are having a job fair, so if you know of anyone that's looking for a job, also have them come out, and then we have our expo. The other thing that I wanted to, I have actually one directive and then a request. I'd like for the city manager, if you could maybe call the pest control to come out and spray City Hall. I've been spending a lot of time with the bugs, different places throughout City Hall, so I'd like for you to have the building sprayed for pest control. The other thing I wanted to, and I'm not sure how we go about this, but can we proclaim May 10th as Latina Mother's Day? The other thing that I wanted to do is make mention of our Mother's Day celebration. It's going to be May 10th at the Memorial Center from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We're going to have live entertainment, and as always, it's going to be free brunch. You don't want to miss out on this. And then, lastly, I just want to say thank you to all of the folks that have helped us put this expo together. It's a lot of work, and everybody's been chipping in, working really hard. And I just want to say a special, special shout out to Kewana and Michael Perez. They've been doing some amazing work. And Kewana has put her foot in this work for this Business Expo. So, if you all have time, please come by and see all the work that your colleagues have put in for the Business Expo. And I look forward to seeing you. And if you need a flyer, this is that flyer that I can give to you, and you can pass along to your neighbors, but please make sure that you share. Thank you so much, I hope you had a wonderful Easter, and I'll see you guys next time.
Thank you, ma'am. Any go-bags before I leave this side?
I'm done.
Okay, let's make sure that we, there's none going back, you know, we need to get through here. I'm a little hungry too, but if you need to, you can still. Okay, oh, okay, now, our next person is council member Angie Reyes English, go ahead, Ms.
Your Royal Highness, let's see. Rubbing Cutting Ceremony, Zella Davis Park, Tuesday, May 13th, 11:00 a.m. Thank you so much, Vaughn and Wreckin Parks and everybody that are upgrading our parks. Residents love it, and they're reaching out and saying so, so thank you so much for that. The Hoops Classic Junior Sparks, July 13th through the 15th at Betty Ainsworth. Let's get our students to do that. To our IT, City of Hawthorne, thank you so much for the My Hawthorne 311 app. Hearing lots of great stuff about that. This last Saturday, we had our Earth Day Service Provider Fair, 17th Annual. And let me just tell you, that was a great turnout. And thank you to all of those that contributed and donated and made great efforts and strides, including our Public Works Department. So, thank you and kudos to Public Works and Community Services, just everybody, including the committee that hosted, you know, the planning of the event. Truly appreciate it, thank you so much, Councilmember Montero and team back there, hiding back there on the wall. Let me just give a kudos to our Hawthorne Police Department with regards to the Special Needs Awareness Program, the decal that's put on windows of homes to let folks know that we have special need individuals at the home. It was showcased on Channel 22, and I saw that on TV from my home. And it's very proud to know that we've got our policing in our community providing an additional service, so thank you so much. This coming weekend, April 26, 9:00 a.m. at Eucalyptus Park, the 2025 Autism Awareness Walk, thank you for that. Again, Councilmember Montero, I believe this is the second annual, is it second annual? Thank you, and we've donated to that, those efforts. And then, this coming Thursday, April 24th, our Business Expo and Job Fair. Councilmember Manning spoke about that here, so thank you for that. Again, this is your fourth or third year?
Third year.
Third year.
Third year.
And, yep, going strong. April Festival, Thursday, May 1st, 6 to 8:00 p.m., and that's at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. And this is for our individuals, our commissioners, with the City of Hawthorne Community Services Department, Wreckin Parks Recreation, Fine Arts Commission, thank you for your efforts and what you're doing to bring about the arts in our community. Can I just make, real quick, thank you DJ for coming out again for your presentation with regards to the safety plan. Great work there, it's never easy, especially when you're relying on data and people to reply to surveys in the community. So, thank you for your hard work there. I want to also thank your Engineer Department and Public Works Department. Kudos to City Clerk, one clerk to another clerk, congratulations on your efforts and your notary, your notary, that's important. Thank you for that, and providing notary services here in the City of Hawthorne. To Guido for Hawthorne Airport, reporting out on our Hawthorne Airport. Lots of great things happening at the airport. Lots of still information that we would like to know more on, and I'm sure we'll get that as time moves on. Thank you to all of our service providers that were here this evening. Without you, we would not be able to address the needs here in Hawthorne, to address all of the social service needs, and then those needs that go beyond. And you saw that tonight, just by all the vendors that came out, the service providers providing a service to many residents, families, and children. So, thank you to all, and I am proud, especially for Hawthorne Police Department in embracing, in partnership and collaboration in those efforts. Ramona Park had its upgrades done, and I want to thank Bill and the association out there for acknowledging, and families that have been reaching out to me with regards to how soon it would get finished. And I know Vaughn, we would oftentimes talk to the community, and they're excited to see finally it being done, and look forward to the grand opening on that. Let's see. I just want to make mention, just, you know, all the good things that we've been able to do here in the city that have been a long time in the making. We've come a long way here in the City of Hawthorne. There's been things that have been implemented that otherwise might have not been implemented, and it just goes to show that we have a great group of individuals, you know, that choose ultimately to run for office and provide a service and bring those ideas and implement those. And so, it goes a long ways. We're very fortunate, and families and people have spoken to me about that, that, you know, we've come a long way with regards to just addressing things that ultimately, maybe some others wouldn't want to know about or want to address. And so, I'm very excited about that. And then, I just want to just express, because I've been hearing too, you know, families being concerned and worried, especially to our Latino community and, you know, immigration and things like this. It's never easy, you know, they feel targeted, they feel a certain way. And as a Latina woman, and again, a representative of all of our residents here in Hawthorne, it's important that I say something. And it's very difficult. I know that there's different stories to different, you know, challenges and whatnot that folks go through in these uncertain times. However, I just want you to stay encouraged, stay in your faith, and just go about your regular business as you've done for years. And that's the only encouragement, and that's the only thought I could provide you. However, I'm open to talking with those that have reached out to me and have expressed their concerns and, you know, where I stand. It's really hard, it's really hard. But yeah, that's a tough subject, Mayor, it's a tough subject. But it's one that we need to address, and I'm going to continue to just bring light to that. Hopefully, it'll, you know, pass. And this just goes to not, I've forgotten to express, you know, Caesar Chavez Day, the end of March was 31st Caesar Chavez Day. It's a federal holiday, and everybody gets that holiday off. And it took a lot of effort to get that day recognized. And so, I think with that, it's just, you know, it compacts just everything that's going on. So, yeah, with that, just want to thank everyone for tonight, it was a good night. Lots of great work from our departments, putting out a lot of information, doing great work, a lot of projects in the pipeline. And I'm just going to continue to push, and anywhere that we need additional assistance in our departments, especially in our IT and our Public Works, and pushing along AI and anything that we could do, please let us know, because at the end of the day, Hawthorne's the better for it, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Protem Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, good evening, everyone, thank you for coming, thank you for listening at home. First, I want to say thank you to all the presenters, because we did have four of them, you know, the DJ and the Engineer Department, Akbar, thank you for the safety plan, well taught. I appreciate that. Guidi for the airport update. Meet Nate Joss, thank you very much. You, like Ms. English said, you're guru of the technology, so keep us in front of everything, because we always do innovative stuff. So, and we in the cast of the be number one in the South Bay area, so thank you. The American Association, I do support. So, one of the directives to the city attorney is to try to see if we can amend that order that we already have, so I appreciate that. Today is Earth Day, so I hope everybody somewhere out there, you know, plant a tree or buy a plant and put it in your room, and it can give you clean air, a little oxygen and stuff, so do that. Also, congratulated to our city clerk for the municipal week, and I know you guys have been doing outstanding job there, so thank you for that. Again, I want, I have to say thank you for all of those who participated in Earth Day last Saturday, especially the vendors, because we got more than 35 different vendors over there. So, thank you for all of that, and the sponsors. Thank you Community Service, Public Work, and all the departments where they presented, from housing to homeless. So, thank you for all the effort that you guys put in, and for the cable and Eric downstairs. So, thank you for all of that. Also, yesterday, first time I played golf in my life. At the Parks and Recs Foundation Golf Tournament. So, actually, it was a fun day, I enjoyed it and I think maybe I'll do it next, next year. And, and I didn't do too bad, so, because I did a birdie, so that was, I say, oh, yeah, so I'm a pro now. Well, you just hit the ball twice and you got on the hole, so. So, that was pretty cool, so I, I enjoyed it. Thank you Kimberly Mack and, uh, Ms. Oshawa for represent, uh, for giving us the update on the, uh, housing element and, and plan. So, unfortunately, we know every year we got less money from CDBG and Home Fund, but at least, uh, we, uh, we hope then Dodge don't cut no more money from the, from the Housing Department. Yes, and, uh, Mother's Day, we got the, uh, Mexican Mother's Day on May 10th and then we got the regular Mother's Day on the 11th of May. So, unfortunately, I'm going to miss both of them because I'll be out of town. So, uh, congratulations to all the mothers out there that's coming up in, in, uh, May. And don't forget that the Hawthorne Presidents' Council K-9 Dinner is going to be on May 15th at 5:00 p.m. at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. And I hope everybody can come and, because we tries to raise money, uh, for, for the K-9 Training, Auto-Buy New Dog. 5:00 p.m. And another director that I want to give is to city attorney, maybe we can have a closed session and talk about billboards.
That may not be.
Nope.
That may not be proper topic for a closed session.
Well, figure it out, because, because, you know, because remember we had some, some, uh, litigation going on and then you gave us an update that it was thrown out. But we want to explore some other.
I think, uh, that might be a little bit too much to even be discussing in public.
Or maybe we'll.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll talk to you off the record.
Off the record, okay.
Find out what is.
But something for us to come up and discuss, you know, if we have to do it in public or do it in public. But, but I think if it comes to litigation, what is our next step, so, uh, just, we want to make sure that we do things right. And again, um, oh, um, my deepest condolence goes to all of us that are Catholic, like the, because the Pope died yesterday. And one of my aunt that lived in Portugal, Lisbon, died also yesterday. She was 93 years old, it was the last auntie from my mother's side.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
So, um, my, my sympathy goes to all, around the world, because everybody's mourning the Pope. And so, that's it, tonight, good night.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a quick announcement?
Yes, sir.
Um, so, May 23rd, we're going to have the AB 1234 Training, it's mandatory every two years. It's going to be conducted here at, uh, in city council chambers for all the commissioners, elected officials, along with all the management department heads. And it will be done in-house by myself and my two assistant city attorneys. It'll be from 2:00 to 4:00 in the city council chamber. It's May 23rd, it's Friday.
I'll, I'll be.
Well, so, you keep, if you can make it, it's live, uh, session and then it's going to also be recorded and then I think we're going to leave it with the City Clerk's office, so you could do it online as well and get the certificate.
Yeah, because I'm going to be in Milwaukee on May 23rd.
So, if you can't make it, you could do it online.
A conference for the Moose International.
And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Yes.
All right, thank you, guys. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Just want to let you guys know that, you know, I really appreciate, like, what we've been doing on council. We've been, uh, talking about things, uh, I, I sense a lot of constructive discussion up here when it comes to the issues, uh, valid, very valid questions and concerns. And, um, I'm glad the way things are going with our council, so, um, very smooth, very smooth. And, um, I've, a lot of people have contacted me and are very pleased on what's happening up here, so. So, uh, I just want to let you guys know that also, okay? Well, I, I took a little break, I went to Europe, like, a couple of weeks ago, but I came back refreshed. I went to Poland, I went to Poland and I haven't been to Europe in, like, in 10 years. I used to go a lot, but it was very refreshing and, uh, one of the most, uh, opportunity to reflect and I was thinking about Hawthorne all that time and I just tried not to call to ask about city business. I was thinking about you too, uh, Councilwoman over here, you know? No, 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 I was, uh, it was good, but one of the most sombering moments, folks.
You know how spooky that sounds?
Yeah, that, that kind of sounded spooky, I got scared right now, I thought about it now, just kidding, just kidding. But I just want to let you guys know that, um, one of the most sombering moments that I had, you know, it's like, oh, you know, you hear about all these things about the Holocaust and, you know, all the things that happened during that time. One of the most sombering experiences when I was over there was when I visited Auschwitz and then Auschwitz-Birkenau. It's like, I can't believe that a lot of these things have happened, et cetera, you know? You know, a lot of those things, it's like, it just brought, um, it's just very sombering, um, just brought it to life, uh, in my eyes. And, uh, I think we need to be very conscious about what's happening in the world because in a lot of ways, there's a lot of things that start to look like they're leading that way in certain parts of the world, you know? I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to discuss anything or debate anything, but we need to be very careful that these types of things don't happen. So, you kind of see the precursors of, of things like this happening right now. So, I just wanted to share, uh, a moment, a point of reflection. And, uh, every single time when I do that and I go out, uh, up, uh, overseas or I go out of the country and I come back, I'm like, I, we're just so blessed to be living in Hawthorne, you know, the, the lifestyle that we have here, like, the proximity to all the major sites, our trans, opportunity to go to all the, you know, to Hollywood, to the beach, to downtown, to Disneyland, Universal Studios, or, you know, all the different amenities that we have here. I mean, wow, you go to New York, it's all crowded, it's all messed up. San Francisco, it's all crowded and messed up with, like, the transients over there. You go to other areas, it's super expensive, other areas, it's just not that many things to do. We're very blessed to live here in the City of Hawthorne. And that's one of the things I wanted to bring back and tell you guys, that I was like, man, I, I love it here. So, I know it's only going to be nine days that I'm over here, but going back to Hawthorne, it's like, I got everything, you know? All I got to do is step out of my house and, you know, wherever I stay and just walk down the street and I got all these things left and right. So, we're very blessed, we're very, very blessed. I really appreciate the friendly banner that we have up here. I know sometimes we tease, we're all giggling and, I mean, I might be poking at one person more than the other, so I'm sorry, I'll start to pull back a little bit more or whatever, but, uh, it's friendly banner, we're getting along, we're smiling, we're getting work done, so I'm really happy with that. We have events that we travel to, so there's an upcoming event that I might be, that we're going to be going to, um, some elements of the council, um, in Atlanta, so, uh, try to recruit some of our council members to go. So, if, if you haven't signed up, make sure you talk to our city manager and like, sign up and, yeah. I'm a board member for the group, it's the National Association of Latino Elected Official. No, I, I don't get to go free, I don't get to go free, it's not that way. No, 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 don't, so, I just want to make sure that you guys know that we're going, um, to these things to educate ourselves, to network and to, you know, and to make good things happen for, bring back good ideas to, to, to the city. The Autism Walk, I asked if you could donate 250 from my allotment and. Okay, just a moment, but, yeah, hold on, slow down. Autism, the Autism Walk, I already asked that last time, so just repeating. And, and then the North Hawthorne Community Association, um, about 400, uh, to, to them. And I think I got about a couple hundred left to give to her Mother Days, Mother's Day event, okay? 250, 400 for the North Hawthorne Community Association and 200s to, to her event. But, hey, guys, so, that, that opens up, I mean, one thing that I just do want to breach, it's a topic that I want to breach, is how we fund our events here in the city. I think there's just, uh, uh, I know, uh, I think we should really ought to consider, I know we have this thing about having, like, this whole, like, little allotment of 300,000 that we, 2,000 that we could give up, what? You already, come on, you guys keep interrupting me. I think, honestly, I think we should just, like, do away with it, it puts us in a pickle and, uh, we're, we're caught up in trying to, you know? Well, first of all, we have, the first thing is the stipend, okay? We could just get up for debate later. You know, you have so much and I got, we got a whole bunch of groups and nonprofits coming up to you and asking for these, uh, for a donation, then you run out and then, oh, sorry, I don't have anymore. And people look at you all silly, so it's, but that whole concept of donating to the nonprofits to the homeowners associations and all this other stuff, having that amount of money there, uh, I think, uh, causes a bit more problems than, uh, for us. It becomes like a political decision and I think we just maybe ought to consider maybe, uh, doing away with that completely. It's, oh, no, so then, also how we fund, you kind of see what I'm saying? And then, but the, the way we, the way we fund also our events here in the city, that's a different story, I think. Yeah, no, but that other one, if, we'll bring it back, we could talk about, explain. But how we fund our events here in the city, it just, uh, we, I think we ought to consider that because there's, uh, uh, I think we got a, we have a lot of, uh, businesses that have, uh, privately shared their, uh, feed, uh, concern and kind of, uh, that they're overtaxed, that they get approached a multitude of times for, uh, for donations, for events and all this other stuff. So, I think we should really consider how we approach, uh, like, the funding of events. Uh, but I know sometimes, you know, I, in the beginning, I used, when I started off, you know, I would be the host and all the, all this stuff and somebody else would be the host, et cetera. But I, I think we should, we ought to move away from that and just have, like, uh, just the City of Hawthorne host events and, uh, we choose which events we're going to have throughout the year, um, and, uh, things get funded. There has to be a way that we, we keep going back to the businesses over and over and they're just getting annoyed. That's bottom, that's the bottom line for these events. We're having too many, uh, too many events, we ought to cap out how much we spend on events and we got to consider, to make a decision as to which events we do have and which we keep and which ones we don't. Okay, so I just wanted to put that out there, we could have a formal discussion item later on, um, and then we could talk about it. That's it on that. It doesn't mean, hey, let's extend the limit, let's have a limit on how much we spend on events because then we have staff that comes out to the events and supports them and, you know, that's a cost too and all these other things, okay? It's for discussion, it's not like it's a decision, all right? So, uh, the permit parking, uh, thing that you mentioned was, uh, we started off with a group coming up, complaining about, hey, the parking on my street is bad, I don't want permit parking, okay. We, uh, we granted permit parking along the street. And in particular, this was like, uh, we have the Manita Gardens area and then we have the Rosecrans, right? Right there, and then across, we had a Bajer Park. And so, that first street in Bajer Park said that they were having a problem with people from Manita Gardens parking there, so we granted them, uh, permit parking. Then the next street over said, hey, that, there's all these people from next door, from, that are starting to park over here. They asked for permit parking. And sure enough, like, about, uh, a month or so, a few months later, that next street started asking for this, you know, the permit parking. So, uh, it's, uh, something that, once we do it, it starts creating problems for other sectors in the city. And not every sector in the city require, would require permit parking, but what some of the groups are asking for is, like, the entirety of the city having permit parking. It would cause a stress in some areas that don't need it, um, and then some of the, it, it would cause stress and then there's some people who have multiple cars and that's a fault of theirs. I mean, we have fam, you got, like, multiple families living in one, you know, a single-family residence and you got, like, six cars or six or seven cars that's in some places. And then they try to play with this whole thing about, I park, you know, I straddle to, uh, T-parking spaces. And then, like, once my mom or my dad comes home, then I move over and then my, the other person parks another. So, it's just this whole little game plane, so I, it, it causes more problems, uh, it, it, uh, basically, it's a domino effect on how it impacts the, the local streets, et cetera. So, um, personally, I'm averse to having a parking, uh, permit parking, uh, because of all those problems that it had. And then, uh, not everybody in the city is asking for permit parking. We have, we do have some people who they would like, like it that come up here and, uh, but I don't have, like, an, I personally don't see a wave and wave and wave of people asking for permit parking. It usually happens when we got somebody that, uh, didn't like the T-parking, that asked for the permit parking. So, when I count the number of people that asked for it, that's not 90,000 people asking for permit parking. That's something very important to know. I know some people probably call me later because they heard this meeting and be upset, like, I can't believe you, you turn your back on the residents. You and the two or three other people that have come to council, yeah, maybe I said something you didn't like, but we got to consider those types of things, right? It's just four or five, respectfully, I, I understand what they're thinking about, but it just doesn't work. And then, on same token, we got, um, I go, I mentioned the T-parking that we talked about. People don't like it because they can't fit their big old campers that they have, but they do have a driveway where they can stick them in and then they won't have a problem. So, I think, uh, what, I think we should keep going with the T-parking, um, and, uh, if possible, we could probably, uh, look at maybe pulling back on some of the permit parking that we already put out there. Or leave as is. More people complained against the permit parking that accepted it, you're right. Okay, thank you for mentioning it. Yeah, then the next thing is.
To the chair?
Yeah.
So, what do you suggest, um, if T-parking's not the answer, permit parking is not the answer, how do we address the issues that people are having in their neighborhoods?
You know what, uh, I've always mentioned that this, this, this parking issue, okay, these parking issues are happening in areas where there's apartments. The park, the apartment owners are charging, and you're, you know what I'm talking about, uh, Ms. City Clerk. They're charging people extra fees for parking their cars inside their, their, the parking garages. So, they opt to, I'm going to, I barely was able to rent here in the City of Hawthorne and now these guys are charging me an extra monthly fee to park my car in the parking lot of the, of the apartments. So, they opt to save that money so they could feed their family and they end up parking out in the, in the street. Okay? So, that, if that's something we can enforce, I think we should, but it's like, somebody's trying to be, these people are trying to be greedy out there and causing a problem for us. You know a little bit of what I'm talking about.
You also have businesses that are parking in residential areas too.
How, I'm willing to go and enforce that, especially some of the mechanics, that's something.
That's a big one, and residential care facilities.
As well. We have to regulate some of that stuff. Can we limit the amount of families that live in an apartment and, you know, can we limit the amount of cars that a family, that a single-family residence uses? Uh, you know, they're like, we can't necessarily, but hey, but that's also respectfully to the opinions on the council, that's why I say, hey, we got to be very careful on how we plan, have our land use planning. When we build residential units and we want to pack things in there and, uh, the people, the, the developers are unscrupulous, uh, developers sometimes and, uh, they're the types that will cause that, hey, they're going to ask for density bonuses and for, uh, less parking, that comes up often. And now the state, but before it was because council would, like, agree on that stuff. So, now the state's put, you know, talking about, so I think we should be very, very concerned about those things.
So, can we look at the businesses and what we can do about them parking in residential areas and the mechanics taking up?
I think we should have a discussion though further, but go ahead.
Yeah, I think we're jumping the gun just a little bit, uh, maybe two council meetings ago, we discussed that, Public Works and myself, we're conducting a parking, um, assessment with outside.
Okay, let's let that take place.
So, we'll have data for council to debate and discuss as we give recommendations and move forward regarding resolving our parking issues, but there's not going to just be one answer to resolving parking. If that was the case, every city would do that. Uh, we can improve some areas that we have to, uh, re, release some of the parking here, but there's not going to be one item that's going to resolve parking in the city. but there's not going to be one item that's going to resolve parking in the city of Hawthorne. But if we can wait until we bring the presentation to council for debate, I think that would be the best way to go.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So, yeah, so today when we were talking about the Hawthorne Airport, there was just some concerns that like I had, like on some of the costs and where we're at with regards to, you know, having to go into our coffers to be able to keep that thing alive. And just concerns as to the, seems like there's a lot of development over there, but the city's in a, you know, you know, they don't seem to be able to pay their, to be wanting to or able to pay their, the rent that's owed to the city and leaving us in about a $200,000 shortfall. So, I think that's very, there's more that I probably going to be wanting to inquire about that. So, we'll leave as is. So, the final thing is that, you know, we're Catholic. A lot of people are Catholic here and out there. And so, we lost our Pope, you know? And Pope Francis was a, you know, a great charismatic leader, took the church into a direction in which it needed to. He was appropriate for the time right now in the world and bringing some of the direction and positivity back. And, you know, just, you know, to hopefully, well, that he'll rest in peace. And there's going to be a new Pope very soon, probably less than a month's time, because I think there's about 10 or 15 days worth of mourning. And that, whatever, yeah, close to two weeks, maybe three, two weeks. So, very soon, we're going to have a conclave, and it's not like the movie that I saw, and you guys saw out there. It's all like all this dramatic stuff, but just a lot of prayer taking place. And I'm of the opinion that I think we're going to see our, our first African or Asian Pope. So, let's see whatever God wants, and yeah. So, let's close out the meeting in honor of the Pope and for Mayor Protem Montero's, his aunt who passed away recently. Okay? Moment of silence, please, guys. Thank you, guys. Meeting's adjourned at 9:09.